Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order at 3 o'clock, March 13th, 2018. Roll call.
Ms. Snell.
Here.
Ms. Matoye.
Here.
Ms. Flor.
Mr. Davenport.
Here.
Ms. Franco's absent.
Ms. Black.
Here.
Ms. Yelsey.
Here.
Ms. Navarro.
Here.
Okay, so the first thing on the agenda is a study session on Estancia High School Theater Architect Selection Process and HVAC Projects Update.
Madam President, before we ask our esteemed presenters to step up to the podium, I would like to share with you that I appreciate Mr. Marsh's team and how they've been willing to work with us and to kinda step out of their comfort zone about how we've been operating and consider better ways to make sure that information is presented to the board in a timely manner, which means before. So, I really appreciate especially Mr. Marsh and Adah's efforts. She presented yesterday at the quarterly debrief, did a very nice job on quick summary on all the projects, and there are many, many projects going on. So, this is a first step in how her team is, and Mr. Marsh's team, is modifying their processes to keep the board abreast and informed of their procedures and take some recommendations from the board on how they would like to also proceed, have them proceed. So, Mr. Marsh, are you up?
I'm up for a little bit. Madam President, Board members, Dr. Navarro, thank you for this opportunity. Adah Zarezni, our facilities director, is going to do a large portion of this presentation, and I'm not going to stand here the whole time while she does it, because for the two of us, that's a little bit too much like me looming over her, so kinda decided that Adah's gonna come up and do the presentation, and I will step up occasionally and offer some remarks as well, but most of the work that's going on in this specific area is her team. We're going to, she's gonna give you a brief overview of some of the things that have been going on really, really recently, and then dive into the air conditioning projects and the theater project, those specific items that you were looking for more information on. Adah?
Good afternoon, Presidents Snell, Board members, and Dr. Navarro. Thank you for allowing us to do this. It's nice to get FaceTime with you. It was fun to do the presentation yesterday at the quarterly debrief. It's nice to get feedback so that we can make sure that we're making informed decisions. So, we all appreciate it. I know my team does, you know, really hard work behind the scenes, but you knowing about it makes us, you know, do a better job and feel good about our work, so thank you for that opportunity. I did do a presentation yesterday just to update everybody on some of the projects that we've recently completed and some that we're working on. I have a few of those slides here. I'm just gonna run through them quickly, because the bulk of it will be the air conditioning and the theater process. So, we've been working on the Corona Del Mar LRC, which was a 6,000-square-foot space that we renovated to bring the facility up to, I guess we'll say one of our goals is state-of-the-art, right? So, state-of-the-art facility here. We'll be doing a ribbon-cutting ceremony tomorrow, so hopefully everyone will be able to attend. We all know what we've gone through on the CDM Sports Field, so I won't dwell on this one too much, but we are in design. We've had initial meetings to get through the schematic design process with the architect. We've been able to pull in all of the coaches that are gonna be using the facilities and have that meeting already. We got great participation from the site, so again, just kinda tweaking our process a little bit and getting a lot of information initially rather than later.
Can we ask, just a quick question?
Sure.
So, can I assume that the coaches get their own stakeholders together before they have their meetings with you?
That would be a question I'd have to follow up with Kathy on to see what they've done. I imagine because we've been talking about this particular project for so long that that's occurred on this project, but we can verify that. One other thing just that's come out of this meeting in particular, on every single one of our projects now, we have a meeting log. So, what was discussed, who was there, when it happened, where it happened, and a sign-in sheet. So, if you're ever curious and you need that type of information, we have that available to you.
And any tweaking?
The only thing that I, that came up was the fencing around the shot put area. It was designed originally to be a four-foot height fence at the track side and 10-foot height on the discus side. That's gonna all be 10 feet height all the way around, just for added security. That was basically it.
Okay.
Long jump, triple jump.
Uh, long?
Did we change the one or the runway direction?
Um, oh, yes, they did. They put them parallel to each other rather than running opposite, because they'll stagger on running the same.
They'll run it.
They're far enough apart that you could do that, but they just asked for that to be changed, which was something we changed at Newport Harbor Davidson Field.
Okay.
Costa Mesa High School softball upgrades, we're building a new batting cage and installing a new scoreboard, and that's our standard scoreboard that we're doing for those type of improvements throughout the district. Ensign, we're still working on the fire repairs with insurance that took quite a bit longer. There were still some code-compliant issues that the insurance architect hadn't incorporated into the drawings. The girl's side of the building is being constructed now. The boy's side will occur, even though there was no damage to the boy's side. We were required to do ADA upgrades to all the restroom fixtures.
Of course.
But, the good side is, good side is, is that we're taking advantage of the change that we made in the PE shower locker count requirement, and we're able to remove some of the showers and re-dedicate that space for storage and other purposes.
Oh, good.
So, timing not great, but we had some benefit. The Estancia High School Aquatic Facility, as you all know, we are going through the, we're starting the design-build process. We are nearly complete with the scoping documents. We had, we've had several meetings with the site and finalizing that scoping document to make sure we get all the elements in. We'll have probably one more meeting with them before we actually issue the scoping document and the RFP. I'm waiting on the final RFP, RFQ from the, our attorney who's putting that together. And as soon as we have that out, we'll be publishing that schedule, but we anticipate starting, if we looked at the schedule now, it would say an April-May date, but depending on if the school wants to finish out an activity, it may be a June start date, so that's why we just said start 2019.
Who's the, who's the lawyer on this?
John Dacey. You've met him, he's been here to present.
And when the scoping document is complete, can it come to us before it goes to RFP?
Sure, absolutely.
RFP is public, right?
Yeah, the scoping document isn't that lengthy either, it's an easy read, so it won't, it won't be too long for you guys to...
I'll take an easy read at any time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Newport Harbor High School scoreboard, this is the standard again, just like you saw at Costa Mesa. This one took a, it's been DSA-approved for a while. It took a little longer, because we had to get bidding contracts in place to get this issue, the POs issued. We have all that in place, so the Costa Mesa one's actually happening much quicker, because we were able to establish those bidding documents. That's my team. I don't know if you know everybody, myself, Flavi is our administrative assistant, Steve Morris is our project coordinator and DSA-certified inspector, and Mark Manstoff is our facilities analyst. So, over the summer, we have about $24 million of improvements that we're putting in.
Wow.
We'll be touching eight school sites, and we are packing, packaging them depending on the geographic location of the sites and the type of work. So, Mariners and Newport Heights will get packaged together. College Park, Davis, Pomona and Wilson, oh, excuse me, College Park, Davis and Pomona will get packaged together for air conditioning. Wilson will be its own project, because it has air conditioning and the admin and fencing work. Oh, and Woodland and Kaiser are packaged, the fourth one.
Yeah.
You've seen this image before. This is a rendering of Newport Heights and Mariners, what their lobby will look like. It's just, it's just something for you to look at. I know you've talked about this before, Tim's presented it. Wilson will look slightly different, just because of the configuration of the space, but we're using the same architect, we'll be using the same finishes, just with maybe a variety of colors. Here are the, so the air conditioning. We have held all of our public meetings. We had low participation at those meetings, but it was a nice time chatting with the principal.
I went once.
Yeah, you went to one, you got to talk to Mark.
I did.
Yep. So, still good to have these meetings, I'm happy to do it, my team is happy to do it, we can say we did it. What we also have done is whatever we're presenting at those meetings is getting put on our district website, so if you go under current construction projects, we're trying to post them the next day after we present, so even if you couldn't go, it's still there.
Can we make sure that those go on the school site, website also? For those effective, for those affected schools, that it's on, you know, it's on there at that school, so we can make sure that the parent goes on their website for their school, they'll see it.
Yep, absolutely. I've sent them to each principal individually, but I haven't requested that, but we can definitely do that.
Thank you. It was very useful. It, it answered questions I didn't have before they started talking about it. Those were nice. So, it was really neat.
So, as you all know, we made a change in the design of the air conditioning projects. We went from the roof-mounted projects to the ground-mounted projects, uh, ground-mounted units. So, last year, we weren't able to construct any air conditioning. This is basically what it's gonna look like. Outside of a classroom, you're gonna have a concrete pad with a unit bolted down to it, very simple. The concerns that I had heard, and I verified myself, is are the kids gonna be safe and are they gonna be noisy? So, my team, we went up and on the roof of a, the company who actually designed it, our engineers, we went and stood next to these units, we went, tried to poke fingers in it and did everything we would expect kids to do. There's grills over it that are getting installed with our units, so the kids won't get their fingers or anything hurt, and then the noise level will end up being white noise. There is noise, but it's nothing too drastic, and so I think that once the doors are closed, which I, you know, jokingly told everybody that their doors would be closed and all their windows would be closed, because they have air conditioning now, right? So, once the doors and windows are closed, they're never even gonna notice them. If they end up becoming an issue, there's ways to address the aesthetics or any kind of safety issue. Let me, I'm gonna skip ahead really quick. So, we've talked about, if there's a unit that is in the middle of the campus, behind a wall, that nobody accesses, nobody ever sees it, we're not doing anything to it. It's just going on the concrete pad, and it'll just sit there and live there. If it's something that you can see from the street, we're considering what sort of shielding we would do, so that aesthetically, you're not just looking at air conditioning units all over the ground. So, what I've explained to all the principals is that the intent of this summer is really to get these units in operational. We can come back and do plantings in area, in certain areas. The projects were designed with a chain-link fence, DSA-approved with a chain-link fence. It's not necessarily the prettiest thing, so we don't wanna just go install them everywhere. So, Tim actually met with my team and decided which ones specifically we will do some shielding on, and then what is the appropriate way to do it. So, I'm just showing you here that there's a grate that we could put over it if it's an area and it ends up being some sort of safety issue, and if not, if it's landscaping, you could do, like this picture here's silver sheen, and we had used this plant material at CDM. When you, when you walked in, all you saw was conduit coming up a wall, and we had just built a new entry. So, we put this silver sheen there, you'll never notice it.
Is silver sheen a kinda plant?
Plain, light, yep, doesn't, it doesn't have much...
Yeah, and I did wanna mention that the other piece of this enclosure on the left is the kind of thing we would use, for instance, at Davis, some of the units end up in an unused part of the kindergarten yard. There's kind of a slope in the back of a classroom when you, when you first enter the kindergarten yard. Couple of them are gonna end up up there. If we have any issues, concerns, we can put these over them, so that kids can't, also can't put things in. The grates are small enough that you really can't get fingers or hands in, doesn't mean a pencil can't make it in, or something like that. At that particular campus, they're pretty good about not letting the kids up there, but if it's an issue, we'll put these up. And then the shielding with the plant material, in our discussions, anywhere where they face the community, then we're putting up shielding, so they're not looking at the equipment.
But it's not. The day after the air conditioning gets turned on, it's after everything's up and running, and then we can come follow it behind with plant material.
Correct.
So, is each classroom going to have it, or is it still a shared, is it a shared process?
Each classroom. So, that's, that's the, that's the nice thing about this project, changing it from the rooftop to the ground-mounted, is each classroom gets one of these units. We're clustering them together, though, and piping to the classroom, so they're not gonna be just sporadically, they're gonna be in like groups of three. So, here, let me show you that image. So, it's a little hard to tell on this, I was gonna color, I forgot to do that. This, this area here that you can see my cursor on, that's actually three units for that building.
So, what we were looking at before was one unit or two?
Yep, that was one unit.
One unit, okay.
That was one unit. So, you'll have three clustered together, and then, so you'll see a set of three here, a set of three here, and that will air conditioning all of this space.
Okay.
And because that's on Hamilton Street, they'll have plant screening on the front side to block the view.
That's what you meant by screening, got it.
So, this is just a portion of the site plan, just to demonstrate that we are clustering them together, that we're trying, one of the, one of the objectives was, clearly, we still have to have path of travel everywhere, so we couldn't just put an air conditioning unit where there was an existing walkway, and a lot of our schools have walkways all the way around the classrooms, so we couldn't impede on that path of travel. So, that's why they're clustered where they are.
Well, and things are made so much more efficiently now.
Smaller.
It doesn't have to be what back in the day, a window air conditioner stuck on the, and the noy, and the drippy, it's not like that anymore.
Exactly.
Take advantage.
So, this is one of our completed schools, just an example of, it does end up being exposed ductwork in the classroom, so you can see here on the ceiling.
Don't they all have that already for the heaters anyway?
A lot of them do for the heaters. The heaters are typically run along the sidewalls, though, not in the center. We specifically designed this in the center, so that we get even airflow. Otherwise, one side of the classroom is cool and one's hot, so we have it split facing both directions.
Are we having two separate units, and so there's gonna be a heater that makes heat from one side, or is it, the heat gonna?
It's just a single unit.
Might as well ask.
We're reusing the heater closet that's already there, and then putting the condenser, the air conditioner outside.
Right, generally, the ducting we did before, the exposed for heat, generally gets removed in this process, and the new equipment gets installed with this new supply down the middle, supplying both directions, as Adah was talking about, and then there's a return on both sides, so that it separates out into the room, conditions the whole space, and then goes out.
And the heat does the same thing?
Same thing, flows the same way, same units.
The ductwork, yeah, okay, thank you. And each teacher gets to control their own...
Yes, that's the selling point of this, is that each teacher gets to control their thermostat.
We know the first two best...
And the other part, if one breaks, it's one room.
Yeah.
Now, we have, we have one school in the district, Estancia High School, that's still a central plant, and when, when the equipment goes down in the central plant, the whole school is off.
Yeah.
You know, we can run blowers and circulate air, but we can't cool it. So, in this case, it, it helps a lot with that instance, when it does break down. It really helps when what we refer to as the school is partially loaded, when you have two or four classrooms for summer school, when you have the girl scouts in after school for a meeting, when you have, only that room is off, you don't have to run the rest of the campus.
How lovely, how lovely, how lovely.
It makes a dramatic impact on our energy costs for the district as well, as you look at, we're only running that space while you're using it. You know, we, historically at Estancia, we've gone back and forth with the ROP programs that are there in the afternoons, because we have to run about a quarter of the campus just to keep the equipment running properly. As we move over to this type of equipment, that's not an issue. You can use an individual space at whatever hours you need to.
So, are we gonna be replacing the ones, the prototype originally that we put at Davis, you know, the ones that had the air conditioning back in the back, you know, those two, those two?
Yes, where we, where we altered one dramatically, and then we use the other to measure against.
Right.
We are going to, we reached out to that group to see if they were interested in putting a little bit more into it, to update it a little.
Oh, I love that.
As we move forward, and they weren't able to support that, so we're moving forward with the standard.
Oh, man.
Yep.
Lemonade out of lemons.
Yes.
So, if the thermostats are in the room and controlled by the teachers, does that mean they turn on the air conditioning when they were in?
They can override it.
It, it's a programmable, in some ways, technology is so wonderful. I won't go into the ways it's not, but one of the wonderful things is there's now programmable thermostats that we can put into these schools, and we, and we have been for several years now, where we can preset the ranges and the operating times, but they have overrides on them, so that if the teacher shows up half an hour before the startup time, because it starts about an hour before school starts normally, they can show up a half an hour early and say, "Now, I wanna turn the heat on now." They can do that. They come in on a Saturday, they can turn it on for an hour and run that while they're there, but then it'll shut back down.
Yeah.
But one of the wonderful things is the really early versions, you had to program each and every single one of them.
We have to group the districts to say...
Now, we can group them by the school site and group them by the district, and some changes, like a holiday, we can change the whole district. It's literally about a 45-second process to reset that particular day.
Wireless, amazing.
But it, but it doesn't change the fact that if the teacher shows up that day to do some work, they can run the air in their room.
Hmm, so cool.
Interesting.
So, cool. Thank you.
Okay, onto Estancia Theater. So...
Before you start that, can I?
Yeah.
Is that all the projects? I mean, you're starting with the theater now?
Yes.
One, I neglected to look at the start date for the CDM Fields. What was the anticipated start date?
So, CDM Fields is similar to what we were saying about the pool project.
August 19.
Again, it ends up that we would anticipate to be able to start construction in April of 2019, but we talked to the school, and they said, "Well, you, we can't do it then, we need to start probably mid-May." So, wherever it ends up, it's somewhere before summer, or it's the first day of summer. So, so I think the challenge will be, do you want, really wanna start then, let's say mid-May, and not have your graduation there, and then the following year, make sure we're ready for graduation? So, they're gonna miss it one year.
Or, or do we wanna be, you know, have equipment staged three blocks away, and the day after graduation, we tear it all apart?
And one other question, I know some of the schools, especially Harborview, have been, they had some film put on some of their windows last year on a few, and they wanted to do more of that, and I think maybe there's some other schools. Is that a project that is gonna be working?
It's, it's not a project we're moving forward with. What we were requested to do is, as all of these things that are being discussed about safety since Parkland, we're putting a list, comprehensive list together of all those requests that come in, and then Cabinet's gonna have some discussions around those. A number of schools have asked about doing that everywhere.
Well, this, I know there's two purposes of film.
Yes, right, excuse me.
This film was to keep it cooler.
Let me jump in. Yes, Mrs. Yelsey, we had the meeting with the PTA presidents there, and we've looked, Mr. Marsh and I have looked specifically at the kindergarten area, right there at that school, and the potential of providing the covering at that school pursuant to the meeting that we had with the PTA presidents. That has everything, that's completely separate from the Parkland issue.
That's what I was referring to.
Oh, sorry. Yes, yes, we're gonna move forward with that one.
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
Yep.
Good.
Okay. Do we have anything else before we go on to the theater?
Oh, maybe, but...
Well, we'll think about it, it'll start ruminating.
So, we are, we're taking a step back on, on this project a little bit, because we got a little sidetracked with the pool project. We spent, you know, a little bit more energy and time on getting the pool project back up and running and our process moving forward. So, we had started the RFP process for the theater, which was basically based off of a educational specification that was put back, put together by LPA years ago, before we had done any of the theaters or the enclaves. So, that's the basis, and that was included in the RFP that we had put out for the architects. So, did you wanna say?
I wanna interject on this one, sorry.
Looming, it's that looming thing.
I wanna put... I wanna go back a little farther than that, actually. If some of you will recall, when we were first looking at theaters, the original discussion was for all four high school campuses, the comprehensive high school campuses, to have a different type of theater, and the idea was it would be designed specifically for music, or a thrust stage, your classic proscenium, you know, dance, and then the schools would travel to which stage was appropriate for what the performance was going to be. That didn't last very long, because all the schools really wanted to have all their performances on their own campuses. So, the discussion at that point was to step back, take a look at your classic multi-use proscenium theater, which is what became the standard, and then the conversation at the time was to do a 500-seat theater and a 350-seat theater on both sides of the bay. When the Robbins-Lotz Building was built at Newport Harbor High School, that's a 500-seat theater. Corona Del Mar and Costa Mesa are both 350-seat. So, there is going to be that discussion of, do we still want to put a 500-seat theater at Estancia High School, or is 350 appropriate? And that is a discussion that we're going to have to have before we get too much farther down the road to really decide which is most appropriate. You know, Estancia is our smallest high school in enrollment, and a lot of the discussions in the past have been about, you know, we'd really rather have to have another show and fill a 350-seat theater than have kids walk out and have a lot of empty seats. But, we, we need to have that discussion, we haven't had it yet, but everything else is tied to the standard, and Adah will give you a representation. This is actually a rendering about the Newport Harbor High Theater before it was built. There's another drawing that she's gonna show, which is around Corona Del Mar High School, because if you remember, at Corona Del Mar High School, we tore down buildings in order to build the new ones. So, we had to incorporate some new spaces, that we don't necessarily have to do that at Estancia. We may, we probably need to look at whether they get any renovation, but they certainly don't need to get torn down, so...
Okay, so, I know that one of the, one of the concerns of...
We'll send this to you, don't worry.
Thank you.
Good, 'cause it's tiny and lots of words.
And, and I don't intend on going over it, I just wanted you to know it existed. So, I, one of the things that I heard from you all was that, what is your process? Do you guys have things written down? What, you know, how do you do these things? So, I put a couple of samples in here, we're not gonna go over them in detail. We already have put this presentation to be uploaded on, on the district website, so it'll be available there. So, if there's anything that you don't want us to have there, let us know, otherwise, all this information is for you to read later, but I just wanted you to know, this, this stuff does exist. It doesn't, we don't always follow it exactly, because there's differences in, you know, every project and timing of things, but we do have a process set in place for how we budget projects and how we get projects approved.
And if any of us have a question to say, "Well, according to the 13 steps, you're on number six, what happened to number five?", you will have an answer of why number five already happened, or, and we missed it, or...
Absolutely, and, and because we are changing things, how we do things, there's probably a couple of extra steps that we're putting in here now.
Good.
So, you know, conceptual approval before we even hire the architect, budget approval after we do hire the architect, so there, it will get, you know, changed slightly, but I just want you to know these things do exist.
So, I just, one thing that just tweaked is because we changed, we changed our process with the pool. We went to a design-build. So, is that part of what you're, is that also gonna be part of the, part of the discussion at the, for this, or is the theater such a specific type of building that requires specific expertise?
Yes and no, or no and yes. Certainly, there is special expertise. Adah will speak in a little bit about the funding and how we normally do that, and the theater specifically, you have theater-specific theater consultants that you deal with.
Right.
We may have sound consultants, there might be lighting consultants involved. So, the fee structure tends to be a little different, because there are more people involved, but if, if you want to go the direction of design-build on a theater, we can certainly talk about it. The issue that we've had, the conversation we've had internally about it is, it is typically such a complex building...
Complex, right, that's what I thought.
That you really wanna have the opportunity for those committees and those representatives to be involved in a lot of those decisions...
Yeah.
Rather than trying to write a specification that, that doesn't quite get you to where you want it to be.
That's, that's why I asked the question. That's why I asked the question.
That's why we believe that it's going to be a classic design bid-build.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be going through this RFP process the way we are getting proposals from architects individually if we were, we were doing design-build. So this one for sure is design-bid-build, just by the nature of what we've already done. So unless we were given direction to consider design-build, this whole process would change, change completely.
Okay.
We'd be doing a scoping document rather than reviewing proposals.
Got it. Okay.
So theater funding is already in place. We know that we were able to successfully sell another bond through the Mejorat program, over twenty million dollars. Just for a reference point, it's going to be funded through Fund Twenty-Six. We have a variety of funds we use. That's the theater project fund. All the contracts and the accounting will be processed through Accountability. Accountability is a secondary software system that facilities uses to track contracts, process invoices, make payments. And it's the mechanism that allows us to easily submit to the state when we ask for funding. So as you all know, we received our funds, um, back on our reimbursement projects for the enclaves and theaters. And we were able to provide reports in two minutes to the state when they asked for a report. We don't have to rely on going through fiscal and saying, is it this one? Is it that one? Because of the account codes are so restricted. Um, in the county level, it's hard to track things. So it's double work, but when we need the information, it's readily available and it's pretty.
And your team knows technology.
Yeah, um, yes.
There's getting.
You know that.
Yes, and it's exciting. The capabilities that have come with that, I learned.
Yes.
Are fabulous.
Mark's at, Mark's at DSA right now and he's presenting with DSA Friday on technology. So, yeah, he's doing a good job. So anyhow, just wanted you to kind of be familiar with what we're going to, Fund Twenty-Six. You just know that that's what we're referring to.
We see it in the budget. We know that's the theater.
And you still have to present to the committee, correct? Still?
We, we'll talk about that. We don't have that yet. We, we just, all we've done is, all we've done is met internally and talked about what that's going to look like.
Okay, good.
Architect selection. Uh, prepare, so this is just the process. You prepare the RFQ. You either ask for qualifications or you ask for a specific proposal. And if you're asking for a specific proposal, you're typically giving them the exact parameters of what their architect agreement would be, such as it's going to be a seven percent fee. Or it's going to, so if you know exactly what you want in the beginning, then you can ask for the proposal itself. But it's really a qualifications. We're really receiving qualifications. I have, uh, a few of them here of what we've received, just as an example. Uh, we set up the parameters of what information they need to give us in every section. And they fulfill that in their response. Um, so once we send out, where we prepare the RFP, we send it out. In the past, we've invited specific architects to participate. Um, and we will continue to do that if we think that there's someone really qualified and we want them to, to submit. We also posted on the CASH website. CASH is Coalition for Adequate School Housing. And they are an advocacy for school funding. So, um, we've posted it there. They, they host conferences and workshops on a monthly basis. Um, and architects, you know, are, rely on, on getting those RFPs through that, that means. So we did that on this project. We have received back in November now, we received twelve proposals from architect firms who were interested. Six of those firms had originally proposed on the pool and theater project. And then six of those firms are firms we've worked with. So, so a good, a good amount of people.
Have they built the theaters? Have, are some of the firms, the ones that have done the theaters?
All of them have built theaters.
I mean, in other words, that they've worked like LPA.
LPA is one of them. And V, he who designed, uh, Costa Mesa is one of them. LPA did, uh, Newport Harbor.
What Otto kind of brushed over, when we originally did, we're looking at architects for the pool design at Estancia. We asked all the firms to submit for a theater and a pool. We told them we were only building the pool, but we wanted to submit on both because we didn't want to find out we put the pool in the wrong place.
Ah.
That we wanted to look at what were those options for where would you place the theater? And there were like six firms and I think two of them put it in the same place and everybody else put it somewhere else.
But it was tearing down half of our campus.
Yeah. Which was probably not going to work.
They don't know our campus thing.
Yeah, gets a little pricey. Um, one of the things that I did want to point out on this, um, and, and we've had this discussion um, at, uh, the cabinet level, I know, have the conversation with Fred. When you look at Costa Mesa, that school has evolved through the modernization process dramatically. And the theater really was, Paul referred to it as, you know, the jewelry box on the corner. Um, I think of it more of the cherry on top. Um, and so we are having those same discussions as we have these conversations with architects about, okay, what, what is this theater complex? What is this going to do to set that school off? Um, because that school could really use it. Um, the, absolutely nothing wrong with the design, but you're not sure if you're in an industrial area or not when you drive by the campus. It doesn't, till you get to the end and see Jim Scott and the tennis courts and all that, it does not scream high school to you. Um, and so we want to see what, what we can do to really put that stamp on that community about what that theater is and, and that complex. And yes, you've arrived at Estancia High School. You know it.
My favorite is when.
Gerber Field.
Old alumni that drive by, they go, what's that? Oh, my gosh. Wow, I don't even recognize the school anymore. And I go, good job.
You should have a conversation with Don Pender when he describes wanting to take on that project.
Look at the difference in Costa Mesa.
That's what I mean.
I mean, Costa Mesa looked like a prison.
My kids went there. I know. Inside and out.
And so it looks so nice now.
Yeah. Measure A stopped the roofs leaking and then the rest is all bonus. You know.
Okay, so we've received twelve proposals. The next step is to evaluate those responses. So we have a form that we use that we go through. Here's what we asked for, all this criteria. Did they meet the criteria? How much information did they give us and how do we, um, respond back? We will likely shortlist the twelve down to five or six at the most that we would interview. And again, through that process, we have another evaluation form that we ask specific questions. And depending on, um, what the project is, we ask different questions. My favorite question to ask, which I always ask the first question, is, have you visited the campus?
Mm-hmm.
And some say no. And I'm like, okay.
Wow.
That's not good.
We see how interested you really are, right? So there's just, there's some good probing that we can do. Um, everyone is going to have their different opinion of how well-received, depending on their ability or their, um, use of a facility. We have Ryan White that we're going to have be a part of our team. And so he's going to be evaluating them differently than I would. He's going to have more technical experience and, um, so, so it'll be an interesting process.
Um, I, I just wanted to ask, um, so who or how many, um, people do you expect to have on that, um?
I'll, I have another.
Oh, good. Good.
So we'll shortlist, we'll interview, we'll rate, um, we'll rate them again. And then internally, whoever's on that committee, we'll talk and we'll decide what architect we want to, um, recommend for approval. Um, the last thing we do is we negotiate their contract and their terms. And what Tim and I were trying to say is, so depending on if it's a theater, we know we're going to have an acoustic consultant. We know we're going to have audiovisual. We're going to have theater lighting. There's all these specialties that we'll negotiate into that contract. And depending on what firm it is, some have in-house. LPA has structural in-house, landscaping in-house. They have a lot in-house. So it just depends on how we want to structure, what, what disciplines they have in-house and how we would negotiate that final contract. So that piece, sometimes gets a little sticky, but we've done it enough times now with enough firms. And our document, our architect agreement is pretty tight. Um, there, we have lessons learned that we're incorporating into this next architect, uh, contract, even just based off of the old Estancia one. So we'll work through that. Uh, this is just a sample of what the evaluation form looks like. So these are all the, on the left-hand side, and I'm sorry that you can't read it, but, um, just to demonstrate kind of the, the setup is, uh, these are all the requirements. Everything on the left is what they have to submit. A letter of interest, statement of non-conflict, their qualifications, firm resources, consulting engineers, financial resources, fee schedule, firm references, and fee, quality of proposal, understanding the project scope, so how do they articulate it back to us? Um, and then lead qualified. Where, we, um, likely aren't doing lead on any of these projects. We will design to lead standards, which we have on the last few of our projects. But going and, and getting the certification itself has just proven to be.
Very cumbersome.
Not holding the weight that I think the value of what it takes to do it. Because that's an additional fee. You have to pay the architect. It's an additional cost the contractor wants to charge you because there's so much more documentation. And when you submit, um, to the USGBC, they're just very picky. So we designed to lead standards, but we're likely not going to try to certify through.
So it, the other two, the other three are not either?
No, they, they were not submitted through the.
But the high, the, the school is, the enclave are?
That all, all of the schools were designed.
Designed to that level.
I thought that.
But they weren't, no, they were designed to the silver level.
Yeah, okay.
For lead, but they were not, um, actually submitted through US Green Building Council because of all those additional costs.
Interesting. I thought they were. We don't need the sticker.
So you can see each one of the categories has a percent that it's weighted at. So it, it just gives you numbers and you, you talk through it. And it doesn't mean that we can't pick one or the other. It's just a tool to, to discuss what we really believe it should be weighted. So we met internally, um, recently to talk about what that architect selection committee looks like. Um, I, my staff, we, there's only a few of us, so we're all doing, we're all going to be a part of it. You have to have enough people who know facilities and architects to participate. So we're definitely, um, all going to participate in that. Tim will partici- Tim Marsh will participate in that committee. Um, we've asked that someone from maintenance and operations also participate in the committee. We've also invited Ryan White specifically. Even, I know he is under the umbrella of maintenance and operations, but his, his specialty, you know, we need him there. Um, and then from the school, from the school site, we'd have an administrator. We'd have so, a district performing arts rep. Not necessarily the school site, not in the architect selection process. It's, um, from my perspective, it would be better serve us all to have someone who has used our other new facilities to participate in the process of hiring the architect. And then we can engage the teacher and the staff and the, you know, all the, all the, uh, different performing arts teachers as we design the project. Not upfront, just to hire them. If you have any comments on that, please let me know.
I do.
I do. I do.
No, I do agree you need to have a district performing arts rep, absolutely. But I, I also believe you could, you should have the, um, the lead, um, performing arts teacher at, at the individuals, which at the school would be Estancia.
Yes.
Only because, um, I think it's important that they're involved in every step. Um, so they know what's going on. They, um, you need, I think you need both. A district performing arts rep and a, um, a site performing arts rep. That's my personal.
And I don't think it would hurt. I don't think it would hurt and it would be better to include.
Let me ask, let me, let me tweak a little bit. Are we talking about the initial? This is the initial committee. This is not, this is the, this is the, this is the group that's going to be looking at the twelve.
No, this is.
No, six.
So, the six.
No, this is.
Yeah, the twelve.
So who's going to whittle, who's, who's whittling it down to the six?
Our team would. My team would, Tim Marsh. Um, I'm also considering getting another district personnel. Just because our team is so small, I have a lot of friends who work in facilities. So I was going to call one of my friends at Irvine and ask them if they would participate in that process rather than, because we offered to have the school participate. They're like, we don't even know what we're looking at. Yeah, they're like, do we have to be a part of this? Can, can't you just, but they can participate in the interviews, but looking, I sent these documents home with Michael Paul and he's like, I'll glance at them. So, and, and I think that's fair, but they can participate in the six interviews, but not necessarily whittling it down to the six.
Yeah.
Oh, that makes sense. That makes sense.
So then, so the next, so, so then there's the, the six that they're, they're just selecting the, they're not looking at design.
No.
At, by these terms.
Correct.
This initials of whittling it down and looking at the six, they are not going to be, this, this group is not going to be necessarily looking at design.
Correct.
They are only looking at vision. And that's, I think, where, where you get to, I'm not sure that, I would prefer people like Paula on the, the next phase. Because you want them to be, okay, so you selected this, we want more conversations on the, the three.
To me, it's not an either-or. It's, it's, you know, it's not going to hurt for the, um, the school site performing arts teacher to be familiar with the architects, to have some trust to think it's a good choice. I, you know, rather than later come in at the scope part and, um, or the design part and say, well, you know, this isn't a very good architect. It's, I think the buy-in is from the very beginning.
So how did it work with the other two theaters? Because I remember presentations, the other three theaters, I remember presentations here at the board, at the board.
They were actually very, very similar to this.
Okay.
The, the, the structure is the same, um, except that on the, um, and I'm going on memory. The second round where they came in and did the actual interviews, we typically had the site administrator. We did not have the performing arts person at that point. Then when the site committee was formed, absolutely all the arts people are involved. And depending on the school, you may have one individual very, very strong who's very adamant and very involved, and some others who aren't as much.
Mm-hmm.
And then you may have several of them that are all elbowing each other to make sure that they get their opportunity to have input. Um, and so you, um, the schools got to weigh in a little bit on who all that group is, um, from the school site. We typically try not to get the group so big that you really can't manage or get everybody to, to,
consensus.
Go to consensus and work in one direction.
But in this case, I think having the specialized people of expertise that will be using the theater would be the theater tech, Brian, a district performing arts rep, whoever that is, and the site person. Three people weighted amongst all the other group. I don't think it's going to be too much.
Maybe, maybe I can, uh, share something similar that we do in the district. Okay, uh, we have a different selection process for classified management than we do for certificated management. In the classified management, and this is pretty similar to what happens when, for example, uh, like Mr. Marsh's position.
When I came on board, yep.
Uh, is, is, is done. So, uh, there is, uh, what we call a panel of professional competence, a group of professionals who are not from our district. So they'll look at twenty-four applicants and they'll all come in and they'll have some questions for them. They'll have some exercises for them. And this, this panel of experts says, okay, these are the ten you should interview. So they call it down. So this is a calling process. This is not a selection process. The power comes in then, when we get those twelve, then our committee sits down and does the, so there's been somebody who says, and this is very technical from what I am understanding Otto's saying. This is about like that chart you showed with all of those things. I wouldn't know what to mark on that. So what you're doing is you're getting a lot of people who know this industry and they'll tell you, these are the six most qualified or seven most qualified out of the twelve. Then the committee gets together and that's where you get your design people and your school staff. So I think the, yeah, this is a calling process, not a selection process.
This is the calling committee?
Yes, yes.
This is the calling committee, not the next round?
These are the, this is.
This is the selection committee.
But that's what it says. That's why I asked.
This is the selection committee. It's not the calling. The calling.
This is both. Okay, so you have the twelve.
Yeah.
We facilities, facilities people only are going to evaluate the twelve and bring it down to six.
The calling committee brings it down to six.
Yes.
This is the selection committee.
Then we move on to the selection committee where we will be interviewing the six.
I like, I like the way you described it.
Well, and that's where I think I said the teacher should be on.
Yeah, you did. On, right. The teacher should be on.
So we'll add.
Add the teacher.
Site performing arts rep.
Thank you.
Right.
But again, you described a calling committee was made up of experts. And right now, it's, and you said outside experts. Right now, you're, it's the three of you that are the calling committee. And some.
And Tim. So Steve Moore.
Typically at least four, yep.
Tim, myself, and then I'm going to engage another facilities person from outside of our district.
Oh.
Typically, if we had more staff and we had McCarthy on board, we would just do it internally. We wouldn't even go outside.
Got it. Okay.
Okay.
It's two, it's it's a two-phase process.
Right, I got it.
Or is it a three-phase process?
I understand what you're saying.
It's it's two phases to select, and then it's the design process.
Yeah, and then there's.
There's a whole bunch of. Because I just remember the presentations here, where it came down to, and they made the presentations, and this is at the board level is when we eliminated the thrust stage.
Right.
It was right here at the boards, saying, oh, no, because Corona Del Mar was designed to be a thrust stage, and we said, uh, nope, not gonna happen.
Right.
Yeah, thrust stage.
What is a thrust stage? I'm sorry, to be such a neophyte.
It thrusts out into, it's like theater in the round, it thrusts out, it does not have the the proscenium arch.
Oh, okay.
No curtains.
Well, it does have curtains, but it does, but it thrusts into the stage, so it's basically SCR, have you been to SCR?
Yeah.
That's an, that's a thrust stage.
The seating is in a kind of C shape, so that the performers are in the, kind of in the middle.
Okay.
Um and it is great for like a jazz ensemble and small dance, and, yeah, there are some wonderful things, but.
And the reason it was designed that was because we had input from the teachers at Corona Del Mar, who at that point in time were quite into musical performances. You had Val Zemora.
Yeah.
Right.
And so you. Then we talked to the dance teacher.
Exactly, then they talk and they said, oh, no, that doesn't work.
Stages are big enough.
That doesn't work.
Yeah, exactly. We called in Seegerstrom and they said.
We we can talk about this a little bit more if we need to, let's just uh keep going if you don't mind. And so the last bullet was uh facility staff from another district such as IUSD.
Okay.
Um so this is from the ed spec that was developed before we built any of our theaters, this is their original um programming. But basically what this shows is the specification was designed for performing arts, not just a theater. But depending on what area or what was displaced, other facilities may need to be built. So we know at CDM, we demolished the four hundred building, which had their music and uh band room, also had the old shop and um classrooms. And we also had torn down um the seven hundred building, which had a classroom and um some vehicle storage area that the custodian used.
The old auto shop, for those of us who are around there.
Yep.
So this is showing all the program spaces that are needed, depending on what campus we were working on. Some of this was either um renovated or rebuilt, so this is just showing you adjacencies.
Yep, and uh Costa Mesa Highway, High School is a great example, uh we didn't need to tear the buildings down, but we did cut them.
And need them reedged.
And bring them up to modern standards for band and choir.
So we'll evaluate.
And we added a dance, we added dance to it.
But that was part of the theater.
Dance is actually in the theater.
Right, exactly.
So that's a flexible space, so you, the, if you had all of the other facilities um other than the theater, what you would end, somewhere else, and we're just modernizing, you would be getting a theater, you'd get a lobby, concessions, ticketing, black blocks, green room, um.
Scene shop.
Scene shop, and dressing rooms. That would be theater, if you had everything else, and if we end up building this theater, say in the south parking lot at Estancia, and we're not displacing anything else, we'd take a look at those other spaces and see what we need to do to make them programmatically equitable to the other schools.
Oh, I see, okay.
So that that's all this is demonstrating are all those spaces and how those would work if you were building.
Not where they go exactly, but that they all need to be taken care of.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah, the the green room two blocks away doesn't work well.
Exactly.
Especially in the rain.
So again, this is just the program spaces, all those spaces you just saw in the bubbles, here's the minimum square footages that we would build if we're building new, this is what would be expected.
And and this has been used for the three theaters we've built, so they're all commensurate, and this one will be commensurate as well.
Good.
I just put this in here for fun.
Oh, gee.
Um I do expect that we would have to do uh an EIR on this project. Um pu- building a new facility of that size and also having Jim Scott would likely trigger an EIR. We'll go through the steps to to figure out.
Those fairy shrimp.
What, what specific things we need to do, there may be some exemptions if we displace seating somewhere else, you know, there's creative things we can do, but we know sensitive site, we're gonna check all the boxes. Um so in order to start this sequel process, we have to be through schematic design. There has to be enough information to give the sequel consultant so he can evaluate all the impacts. Um I don't think we can do a notice exemption, that's, we were able to do on some of our other projects, but likely not this project. Um Jim Scott required an EIR, and some of the other elements of that EIR was we built a sound wall for Jim Scott. We had a biologist we had to have on the site during construction to make sure we didn't touch the fairy shrimp.
Fairy shrimp.
And then the city came and took care of that area, um and then traffic and parking control. So, you know, we we may likely end up in that same situation with the theater project.
But Mrs. Black, do you have a question, or is this?
It was, the EIR, it was just done so long ago, those plans were DSA approved in two thousand and three. And then we kept asking for permission from DSA to to be able to still buil- build it even though code changed. And then we finally built it, and grand opening was in two thousand and eight.
Wow.
Yeah, it takes time.
I only remember because that's when I had my daughter.
Mostly that was funny.
There you go.
Okay, did you wanna add anything?
I thought Dana had a question.
Dana has a question.
I wanna know, are, do you, um are someone in the district um keep track of how our attendance at the theaters so that we know when you go to look at three fifty or five hundred? You know, what is the trends and, you know, are we, do we have enough space now, and are we lacking?
I don't know specifically how they check that, Ryan probably knows, the only, the only experience.
The theater techs do keep notes on how full a house was.
I would really be curious of that, you know, to fear, you know, before we start looking at making a decision, yeah, or not. Cause some of them might go in and it's packed house, and others, there is, you know, three hundred, it not even close, you know.
So my experience with trying to get counts, because we went through this exercise at CDM for the sports field.
Right.
It was difficult because uh students use ASV cards for certain events, and they don't track those. So it's something that we would have to consider of, okay, let's start tracking it and let's see, so Ryan would probably have the best knowledge of that.
You have to hire a Costco person with a little.
Right, clicker.
Somebody just needs to take a picture, just take, right before the stage, rather, take a picture, there you go.
Well, because there's, you know, you'll you'll have somebody come in and say, it's packed and we didn't have room and, you know, blah, 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 and we've heard. And and then when we go in, same show, you know, it's standing room only, or it's, you know, crickets.
And it depends on the show.
It depends on the show, it depends on the time, it depends on a bunch. I just don't wanna build something.
And how many shows there are.
Yeah, cause this is our last chance in the district to put a theater together, so I would be leaning more towards the five hundred seat, just so we had an alternative, we have two and two. But I get it, I understand.
Okay, so once we have our architect on board, we go through the design process, and this is where we would have more participation from the site and the teachers. We would literally bring in every teacher, talk to them, get their input upfront, just like we're doing with the CDM, sports fields, had every coach in there um to, you know, be able to get that information upfront. Um and so I envision, depending on the level of interest of the of the project and the staffing, cause it just, it just all depends on who the staff is, of how involved they wanna be, but at a minimum, every phase of the project design process, we would have at least one meeting with them. Um probably two, but at least at a minimum one meeting, so we have schematic design, design development, construction documents, and then DSA approval. So we have at least you two or three to four times that we would um be able to meet with them.
Where do, and when are, in that process, which, how often does it come back to us?
Uh typically, we would come to you at the original um schematic design. To say, okay, here's the the general idea, here is, they've they've got an idea of what it looks like, what it's shaped like, but they haven't designed all the utilities, how the building's held up, all those kinds of things. Um and uh you would either bless that or raise your concerns and issues, and we would address those. Um then typically, we would come back at the point that we were gonna submit to the Division of State Architect. And that's really when it, here's where all the outlets are, here, you know, if you wanna dig that deep um into those specific pieces.
Only because we're the ones that get blamed if their outlets are not enough.
I understand.
And so at least I'd like to say that at least I looked at it.
So, uh, have we asked, only because I think three of us, we've, we've, we've been to every, almost every theater, okay? So we've, we have, we definitely have our opinions on this.
Yes, we do.
Have we asked each one of the sites that currently have a theater, if I could have changed something, I would have done this. Because I will tell you that we've heard two things from people. One is, we need the sound walls, because it's, it's built for performing, but we want the sound walls for music. So that's one. And then two, we've heard, for example, at Corona Del Mar, there's only one entrance and you have to go out, you can't get into the other room, you can't get out, exit, except.
There's fire exits, but.
You don't know about those.
Flow and, yeah.
And you have, and you, the long, the long rows. So, so, and again, the question is, and orchestra pit versus no orchestra pit?
Right.
And then I heard, then I heard, oh, wow, you have a capability of having stairs go right up onto the stage.
Onto the stage.
That's nice, and that was from the CDM person who was at Costa Mesa High School, so we hear that.
So I just want.
One one exit row in the middle of the seats versus breaking it into thirds with two rows.
It would be really nice to have those professionals in those, in the disciplines at all three of our schools who have, who, if I, if I were to change something, this is what I would, so that, you know, we've got that information to plug in to the Estancia, the Estancia Theater, so that.
We we have not gathered that information.
I guess.
Right, Martha, we haven't gathered that information, we certainly can. Um and then we would provide it to the committee that's looking at Estancia, so that the people who are involved in Estancia have the chance to say, yes, we understand, they liked or didn't like that there, but here's why we think we want this here.
Anyway, right.
Even in the ticketing.
And some of it is driven by the geography. Um I will give you a great example, one of the constraints at Corona Del Mar was just the physical space we had available and the changes in elevation that we had to address. Um so it drove some some decisions, um and so we'll, we'll likely have some of those um that will drive some of that, but we certainly can provide that information to the to the committee that's involved, so they can weigh all of those pieces and decide what they thinks right for that facility at that campus.
You know, it's just like basic things.
Actually, it was my understanding that that was gonna happen. I know, talking to the the teacher at Estancia, they're they're meeting, I think they've already spoken about this and they will meet, and that will be part of it. But um so we, but we need to um move forward and, yeah.
Let me see.
Finish this.
So really, that that's really it, the rest goes into construction, so I put this information together for you, so you have it, bidding process, oh, and this is your flow chart, Martha.
Yeah, that sounds really good, I like that, yeah, yeah.
Then a miracle occurs.
Well, and my only final.
I know you wanted a flow chart.
Yeah, that, not me, that was charmed, that was. I I only have one other suggestion, and and because I I sat on, when we did Measure A, I was, had the pleasure of sitting on and being on the interview panel for the, that we whittled it down to the five that we ended up with. And I think that provided some clarity that we as a board could put our, you know, our faith and trust in the one board member who could come back and say, no, they asked that question, or, yeah, you know, yeah, this architect just didn't, when he made the presentation, they, I was just like, ugh. Um so I, I truly, I tru- I tru- yeah, I truly believe that that there should be on your calling or however that sixth person, I think that there needs to be at least a minimum of 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 one, possibly two board members. I think it's imperative that that um going through that, we did it with meas- all the Measure A things, um, yeah, I was on it, and, yeah, yeah. So I I I think it's important that we have, we have that.
So you're talking about adding a person, not on the twelve to six part, but the six.
The six to one.
The six, yes, yes. So you could hear the, yes, yes.
You call, we'll whittle.
I do believe that that we should have at least, at least one, possibly two.
We can certainly do that.
Okay.
So again, this is just information, more of our process and our flow of what we do in our department.
It is a real flow chart, Vicky, so we can make sure you get a copy, you can read.
That was a good question, and I'm glad you asked for it.
I love it, and I can, I can download it and print it, yeah.
Nice job.
Because that's where we, where we know, you are here. And sometimes it really helps when someone says, it's taking so long, we could say, yes, because there's like these eight steps that have to happen, and it's dependent on these five other people that aren't getting it back, so.
We have one comment card?
Yeah, we do, we have one comment card, I just wanted to ask one quick question, so when do you think, um I know, when do you think the committee will start with the the?
Calling?
No, not the calling.
The whittling selection.
The the selection, when do you think the selection?
It will probably take us a week to get through, to get to the six, just because of course.
Absolutely.
Um and then depending on the availability and of everybody else, I would say it's at least two weeks out from there, so probably within a month, we have interview scheduled.
Within a month from right now?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yippee, okay, that's great.
And can we have the list of the twelve?
Sure.
Okay, so we have two cards, thank you, that was great, you guys did it.
Thank you, that was a lot of work.
Yeah, and I'm gonna read the small print so that I can ask more questions. Okay, first we have Britt Doughty. I just put it on top.
Gonna lower the mic, not as tall as some. Uh so hello, I'm Britt Doughty, President of NMFT, uh hello, President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, members of the community who are behind me. And so a couple of comments, first off, uh thank you for the report, I appreciate it. Um and especially with regards to HVAC, which is what my primary interest was today, and there was, there was a detail there that was helpful and useful that I can pass on to other members. Um my question is, um how do we notify the general public, especially our employees for this? So uh this was kind of news to me, finding out that we had public information sessions, this is the same information that was probably presented there, so it's, instead of going to six meetings, I could get it at one place, which is great. Um but I just wanna make sure that we have that opportunity for all employees to participate. I contacted a few of the teachers, and some had gotten direct information from their principals, and some had not, and uh so I don't, I just wanna reflect on that process of making sure that we get it to everyone.
Good.
I don't, I don't remember, but she did, but it was good to go, I was at the day.
She's gonna speak to that, yeah.
So for projects that are sequel required projects, we are required to uh send out notices to residents within five hundred feet of the property. So we followed that method for facilities mailing it out directly, um but other than that, we sent.
Also the board policy.
And it's your policy. For all projects now that are visible, right, or a major improvement. Um in addition to that, though, we asked the principals directly to send it out to their staff and their family members, because that was something that had come up, um a gentleman had come to one of the fencing meetings and said, well, none of the parents got notified.
Hmm.
So what I did was, I asked the um principal recently, would it be easier if I sent you hard copies? Like what is it that you need me to do, other than just telling you and attaching it to an email? What is it you need me to do to make it easier for you? Is it print them? I haven't heard back yet, but there is some missing um gap there. And then I know Annette sends out the communication in her regular, you know, format, so I don't know if it goes to all staff, but.
But didn't you mention that when they're doing a project at the school, it'll be on the school's website, or your?
It's on our website, it's on our website, but that's what you were asking to have it.
Martha asked to add it on the school.
Yes.
But on like the HVAC meetings, I don't know, I know how we were notified, but I don't know how staff or.
We asked the principals to do that.
Okay, perfect.
And I'm sorry I interrupted your three minutes, I should've let you finish, I apologize.
And then just a quick, quick follow-up, I was just gonna say, thank you for wanting to involve uh different employee groups on these selection processes, on the theater. Uh it, I think that, to echo what some of the other, what Dr. Navarro was saying, it's probably most appropriate later in the process for them to be involved, especially as as Mrs. Flor, you're talking, you know, what what are we learning from what we've done in the past? Uh and so I know that we have participated at different points in the processes, uh so I wanna thank you for those reminders.
Okay.
I I only had one question, and it went away and came back just now. Is there any conflict for the site theater person, would there be any conflict if they were included in this later on? I don't think so, but just, okay, good, thank you. Sometimes there's a conflict of interest later on and you don't even realize it, and then they'd be excluded later, and I don't wanna do that.
Well, if their, if their husband or relative worked, yeah, that would be different.
That's a, there's a non-conflict.
Yeah, that's what I figured, Mrs. Flor.
I'm sorry, I'm.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. Moving on. Okay, so the other thing I was going to say to Dr. Doughty's question is, we probably should find out which of those meetings got out and which, the notification of the HVAC meetings. There's been, all of them have happened. So which ones, the... Yeah, which ones didn't get sent? Might have to go over and talk to the principal again. We'll see if we could find that out. Okay, next, Lori Smith.
Good afternoon. Lori Smith, retired teacher, parent, grandparent in the district. I appreciate being able to come here today and hear about, in particular, the HVAC. But I also was really pleased to be enlightened about what's happening with the theater. And I assume that the steps and the processes and procedures have, for the theater, have looked at our history with our other theaters and looked at our successes as well as any pitfalls, whether it's design, planning, you know, what's in the walls. And then, during the construction process, the kind of oversight that's there, that it's consistent. So my sense of that today, it really made me feel confident. The reason, when I started out here, it was really about HVAC. As we know, the extreme heat days have increased. It's well documented. It's a huge safety issue. Safety, as we all know, as teachers, parents, grandparents comes first before academics. It, I've been in those classrooms, I've been with those kids. We've had kids get very ill. It is a serious safety concern. We've dragged her candidly. It's just been way too long. Britt had to write a letter to the paper. We just all got to where we felt like we'd been begging for help with this. I'm not sure why it isn't more expedient. My husband's an architect, so I really understand construction, design, the whole state architect thing. But these are, the decision-making needs to move along. And I just hope that you don't allow any more delays with the HVAC installation, that we can get air to those kids. In the meantime, we've also asked for, and I felt like candidly, we've gone begging for just a heat policy. You know, a heat policy won't cost us anything for extreme heat days. That just takes top administrators, some good heads together in a room, meeting, and hammering out a policy. Back in November, when we were having so much heat and so many problems, I wrote PTA Council, Vicki. It got CC'd to Dr. Navarro and Dr. Sung. And I attached a whole huge list. I did a lot of research on it. San Diego has a great policy. It's very respectful. It's a safety policy. It's respectful of teachers and families. You can go on-site, you can read the whole policy. They can go in and look at details, you know, just about health and safety with heat. So I really would, I would, once again, I'm really asking you to get a heat policy district-wide. Obviously, each principal has some particular concerns. There's always individualization. But a heat policy can be done. We can't be left with these sites not knowing to do when we have a health, safety risk on these campuses. And we know it's going to happen again. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Dr. Navarro, just really quick, could you remind us of what, how? I believe we did a survey, did we not?
Survey regarding...
Regarding heat days and developing and working...
Yes, we did that about five years ago. And the survey was, there was really nothing you could glean from it. One way, there was 54, you know, shortening days, 50 against shortening days. It was, it was, it was non-conclusive. And that's the year we came back to you and said, we've got to do our own project. So, you know, the comment made about, you know, why does it take so long? It's because we're using our own money. There is no state money. There is no, there is no bond money that we can tap into because your bonds don't authorize us to build, put in AC. That'd be a violation, and all of us would be going to jail if we did that. So really, it's because we're finding the only way we can to change that, to add that, is through saving, putting money aside from our general fund to do that. And there was a delay. And I was very clear with the principals last year that the delay was my doing. And that was because I directed Mr. Holcomb to put the AC units, the condensers, on the ground because we had had two serious injuries the year before. And I wanted to minimize the time our staff had to go up on roofs. So they had to redesign because the design had originally been to put them on the roofs. When we spoke to the principals, the principals decided they didn't want the AC put in in August or in early September because they were going into two adoptions. And so, they spoke with their staffs, and their staffs asked us not to do that work. We were ready to go in and do the work, move rooms around because each school had enough rooms to move four or five classrooms to another place. But, you know, they wanted to focus on their kids. And so, we went ahead and delayed it, which is why you have six schools this summer and seven schools next summer. That'll complete our AC project through the elementary and most of the secondary schools.
Since this is the first, this is the first go-around of putting them on the ground, we'll be able to judge whether it impacts learning in terms of... I mean, I know we try and focus them, to put them on during the summertime. But will we be able to judge that we might be able to accelerate? Or is that going to be just a basic financial issue of whether we can gather and clump the money together? I mean, is it possible that if we find that it goes smoothly and it's really not impacting learning?
Well, the problem is you still have to do the connections in the classroom and all the duck work, in addition to what's already there. I had asked those questions. Actually, I'm laughing because I asked Mr. Marsh and Mr. Trader, could you do all 13 schools this summer?
And they reported to me that you have done that. And I thought, oh, okay.
And I got, and I got, and I got, I got it handed to me really well.
Well, you could do it at night. What's the problem? 24 hours?
And the reason that they went and asked the schools if we could go in and do it in August and September and work through the first quarter was because I wanted to see if we could get it done. But again, we had to respect the school's wishes. They did not want it done this year, so they waited. And, you know, and kudos to our teams, our teaching teams at the sites. They wanted to focus on our kids and what our kids were doing with the new adoptions. So that's why you have six this summer, and that's why you have seven next summer. And, you know, and I think next summer's going to be even a bigger, even a bigger challenge for this team. But I don't know what the efficiencies are. Maybe Mr. Marsh or Ada can mention it as to, versus, on the ground versus on the roof and...
Well, it's not going to dramatically change the construction period.
Okay.
So that piece, it won't impact. We reached out to contractors to talk about it. And the really big contractors that can step up and do it in the timeline that we want aren't interested in taking on more than three or four schools as a maximum.
Okay.
And there aren't that many of them that we want to have try and get it done in eight weeks. We don't want to be arguing about the unfinished project at week 12.
No, right.
And if we try and do them all in one summer, that's the problem we are very, very worried about running into.
They could lay the pads. All the concrete work.
Yeah. All those things, none of us want to deal with.
Yeah.
You know, and here I am, you know, I'm thinking, I have a lot of answers. I remodeled my bathroom.
Yeah, exactly.
No, it's, and you could see by Ada's presentation. And I'm sure that's just probably, you know, that, we're just looking at the surface and all the work they do behind the scenes to get that all done. Very, very challenging.
Regarding heat policy, we have some sort of a policy in place.
Yes, in fact, Dr. Baumeister makes sure he sends it out every year to all the principals. We follow the OSHA regulations. I've learned a lot more from Mr. Holcomb about the wet bulb test versus the whatever test. I don't know. Is that right? Is that right? Okay. All the things you should know as a superintendent. But, so Dr. B does send it out. It's the OSHA guidelines. He sends it out every time it gets, it's warm. And it talks about what we should do to make sure students are safe. And all your schools have a sharing plan so that those spaces that, and some, and most of our schools have some AC. So they do share those spaces. It's not the most efficient or comfortable situation. But, you know, we made the decision back in 2013 that we needed to do AC. So we've been marching on. And thank you to Mr. Trader, who has somehow magically made it possible for us to continue these projects without any help from the state.
So instead of relying on each individual principal to send it out, you know, because some will be, Johnny on the spot, somebody, some may black. It may just, you know, can we just make it that that should be sent out, not only to the principals, to our families? You know, it's one of those, we attach it to the registration packet, online registration packet. Here is our heat, here is, here's our heat guideline.
So you're talking about getting Annette involved in the process?
Well, not necessarily Annette, but you know, I know we have the, we have all that online registration that every, every school goes through. So you can just attach it to that.
Well, we send it to the principals because we want them to lead all of the procedures that we follow them. They're the ones held accountable for making sure all of these steps are taken. They don't necessarily need to give that sheet to their teachers. They just need to work with them and make sure that they're putting in place the procedures that will adhere to, make sure we adhere to those procedures.
Well, I just want to make sure that the parents, the parents also know, so...
And I got a note here. And I got two notes. One, how do we make staff know about these meetings? And then, the other one is, how do we make sure everybody knows what our procedures are for the heat?
Thank you.
Okay. So, anybody have any more questions? We can move on. We're going to...
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that was really good. Thank you for your comments, and we're going to go into closed session. Good evening. We're going to start. Call the meeting to order for March 13, 2018. And we're going to start with the opening ceremonies. A silent invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Lucy is going to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first step is adoption of agenda.
Move adoption.
Second.
Owen, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And adoption of minutes from February 27, 2018?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then, we go right to the student board member reports. And I guess we'll start with Lucy.
Good evening, President Snell, Board Trustees, Dr. Navarro, members of the Cabinet and distinguished guests. I'm Lucy Demetrick, and I'm representing Early College High School tonight. A brief update on Early College High School. We're currently looking to schedule college field trips in the month of May to UC San Diego and the University of San Diego. Also, our ninth and 11th grade avid students will have the opportunity to take a field trip to UCLA on Saturday, May 19. Sorry. We're in the process of getting all the field trip paperwork completed to be approved in time. This past Friday, we were fortunate enough to have three veterans from the Korean and Vietnam War to come and, to come to our campus and speak to our US and world history classes that day as a part of our ongoing living history program. We are currently in the middle of our WASC visit, which will conclude tomorrow, and we look forward to what the committee leaves with us. We want to thank Board President Vicki Snell, Board Vice President Charlene Matoye, Deputy Superintendent Russell Lee Sung, and Executive Director of Secondary Education, Dr. Kirk Baumeister, for meeting with the WASC visiting committee this past Sunday afternoon. WASC stands for the Western Association of Schools and Colleges, but at ECHS, we like to say that it stands for we are student-centered. Next Tuesday, at Yogurtland located on 1450 Baker Street, we will also be hosting our next Family Fundraiser event. And you can download the Family Fundraiser from our website and bring it to Yogurtland anytime during the day. And if you show it to them, you, our school will receive 20% back of the bill. Next week, Thursday, is our school's open house from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And all current students and prospective students, as well as their families, are encouraged to come out and check what is happening at ECHS so that they can speak with our teachers and students on hand. Lastly, we will miss you at the next board meeting as we will be on spring break from March 26 to the 30. But we will be back on April 10 to give our next report. Thank you.
Thank you. Great report. Okay, and next, we have, okay, I don't see your name tag.
She's anonymous.
Oh, you're anonymous.
I have my polo on.
Oh, good.
Hello. Good evening, board members. I'm Andrea from Estancia. And I just want to kick off by getting ready for a future ego night that shows our incoming ninth graders all the opportunities offered at Estancia and to orientate them with the school's staff, student leaders, and campus. It is a exciting night for our campus to meet their parents and incoming freshman day on April 5. Also, our Estancia intermediate drama presents You Can't Beat the House on Friday, March 16 at 7:00 p.m. in the Barber Van Hooft Theaters at Estancia. Admission is $3 per person, and tickets can be purchased at the door. Mark your calendars for Battle of the Bell for our boys varsity baseball team on March 20, 3:30 at Angel Stadium. Also, this Thursday, March 15, 40 of our seniors are invited to go watch Hamlet play at California State University in Los Angeles at 4:30. And also, this Saturday, March 17, it's our first invitational track meet at 6:00 p.m. at Laguna Beach High School.
Great, thank you.
All right, good evening, all. I'm Van Fine, representing Back Bay, Montevista. Back Bay seniors wrapped up their senior interviews today. Thank you so much to all of the BOE members and district office staff members who sat on the various panels. Our new advisory program will meet for the third time this Tuesday. Students have been assigned a teacher who will now be their advisor their entire time at Back Bay and formally meet with them about 24 times during the year. A team of teachers and Principal Trochio visited Sunset Continuation School in Encinitas last week and observed their unique advisory program and curriculum design. Sunset delivers a fluid NO system where students are not bound by quarters, semesters, or trimesters. Back Bay staff is excited about exploring a similar system, and a few classes have piloted it. 27 seniors visited OCC today to tour and speak with various department liaisons. Since OCC came to our campus this winter and pre-enrolled all of our students, students are excited to see what OCC can offer them now. All of our seniors will formally visit and tour OCC prior to graduation. Finally, we are excited that we have secured St. Andrews Presbyterian Church for our graduation this June and are excited for all of the board members to join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Van.
Val, what was the, Val, what was the name of the program? Van, I'm sorry. What was the name of the program that was not trimesters or quarters?
It was just called Fluid NO System.
Fluid NO System, thank you.
Okay. I know it does.
Good evening. I'm Lauren Griffin, representing Corona Del Mar tonight. So recently, our counseling department is getting ready for Registration Week and getting ready for students to choose their courses for next year. Also, this past week, our junior statesman group just returned from competing in New York. And also, last week, our orchestis dance company had their show, Dream On, last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday in the Newport Harbor Theater. And that was a huge success. The girls prepared many months for that dance. And then, this week, ASB is putting on Inclusion Week. And our goal is to promote unity across campus through this week. So we're doing that through break activities. So we're doing that through break activities, and then Friday night, we're having our Candy Land Dance in the quad with free DJ music, food, and photo booth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jalen, I'm from Newport Harbor. So most recently, at the 48th Annual National Football Foundation and Hall of Fame Scholar-Athlete Dinner, two of our student athletes and our coach Jeff Frankly were honored. We had our College Knowledge Night with speakers everywhere from OCC to UCLA to the Army. We also had our first CSF General Membership Meeting on March 2nd with over 115 kids. We were expecting 40, so that was a big turnout. Our volleyball team faces Redondo at home today. Our lacrosse team had Battle of the Bay last week. Oreas, our dance show, is next week, Wednesday through Saturday. And our CSF food trucks will be there on Friday. Our choir announced that their spring concert will be March 28th in our theater for $7 at 7:00 p.m. And this Friday is our Battle of the Grade Wars Rally, and it'll be the first one on the new field, so let's hope it doesn't rain, but that is all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Rachel Krikorian, representing Costa Mesa High School. With the brief academic update, our eighth graders will be attending Knott's Berry Farm for Physics Day this week, and our high school class was able to attend just last week on Thursday. Our Delta 10th grade students are getting ready for their Cal Poly Slow and UCSB College Tour trips next week. Our ninth grade Delta students are headed to UCSD and USD next month for more college visits. In sports, our spring sports have started out with great athleticism, including our track and field programs especially. The cast and crew of Bring It On, the musical, wrapped up this Sunday with another brilliant performance. This show was truly unique in that it featured over 180 CMHS students. From the actors to the cheer team to the drum line and the dance team, it was a true collaboration. Next up for, next up is CMMS with Music Man Junior, and that will be in April. This Friday is a true CMHS tradition, where we crown our 2018 Mr. and Ms. Mesa at 7:00 p.m. in our Performing Arts Center. And then registration for the 2018 and 2019 school year is quickly approaching. We have a parent info night set for Tuesday, April 10th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have Vicki Waldo, Harbor Council PTA.
Good evening, Mrs. Snell, President Snell, board members, Dr. Navarro, and Cabinet. I missed the last meeting because I was with 70 other people from Orange County that went up to Sacramento for their SAC Safari, where we can better understand the legislators and the process and what's going on. PTA, statewide PTA is now sponsoring a bill to expand the education code, where it lists as a third priority, parent involvement. They want to expand that to be parent and family engagement. And they are also adding more particulars to it, so that it's not so, such a broad category. We've gotten Rocky Chavez, one of the Assembly Members, to sponsor the bill. It's AS 2878. It's gone through the Senate, and it's now in the Education Committee. And Rocky Chavez is the Vice Chairman of the Education Committee. And it really just, PTA just felt that it was a very broad thing to say, parent involvement. Like, what does that really mean? And so they added some more specifics, like the first specific was, welcome new families. So they tried to get it just so that there's more definition to it. And it's hopeful to pass. We're hoping that it doesn't get stuck in committee, but it's hard to say, we'll find out. With that in mind, we at Harbor Council have started a new committee, and that is, for next year, we're gonna start a new program in helping our PTA presidents understand how to welcome the new parent. And expanding that program just to help, you know, put coffee at the front door, do different things just to help welcome the new parents, especially at the beginning of the year. We also had a chance to meet with the Office of Matthew Harper, who is our Assemblyman for this district. And he's sponsoring a bill himself to put on all high school IDs, to put two things on the back of it. One would be the phone number for the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, and the other one would be the National Crises Text Line. Interesting, I'll see where that goes. We're happy to say at Harbor Council that last month, we did surpass our membership numbers for all of 2016-17. So we're on a roll right now. We also are going to, at the next meeting, going to bring our Reflections winners to you for Orange County, the first and second place winners. And we're proud to announce that we do have a first place winner for the state that will be going on to national. He is from Adams. So I think this is probably a unique experience, so we're very happy to be able to present him. And we also are making plans right now for our Honorary Service Awards luncheon, which will be on May, I think it's May, the first Monday in May. And our schools are very involved right now, the PTAs are all involved in getting the nominations ready for their honorary service awards, as well as making plans for next year and holding their elections. And we have held our election, and our new president for next year will be Julie Lenk. And I will bring her to a meeting sometime soon and introduce her to you. We're very excited. She's had four kids that have gone through Newport Harbor High, so lots of experience with PTA. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on to our report, really excited about this report. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, okay.
All right, I'm honored to. I'm honored to announce our next speaker presentation tonight to give a report on technology and innovation in our PK 12 classrooms. And to lead that presentation, we have our Director of Educational Technology, Jenneth Mishney. But we also have our Director of Information Technology, and that's Austin Baumovich. And she brought a whole bunch of folks here, who I think some of them will be part of the presentation, but there's a great team doing some incredible work in technology, some great structures in place, and they have some exciting data to share as well. So I'll turn it over to Jenneth.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Navarro, members of the Board, Cabinet, esteemed guests. We're so excited to be here and have this opportunity to share the great things that we're doing. Can you hear me out there? I'm gonna just pop up our presentation. All right, and, and yes, I like to bring people because, because I can't do it without them. All right. So, I wanted to go down a little bit of the "that was then," because, you know, I've been around for a while. And we've definitely done some great things. We've, we've, we've had a lot of, and this is just like the top of, you know, I just picked some big things. So I don't know if you all remember the Computer in Homes program back in 1999 when I was at Ray. We placed 150 computers. Like, I literally went into the homes with Alida Costinade, I remember, and she spoke Spanish and I didn't. And we, we set up an IBM that we've, you know, had like fixed up in that multipurpose room. We marked their calendars because we set them up with Net Zero, and we said, "This is gonna charge your phone bill if you don't cancel it in 60 days." So, you know, and what happened was, they started returning the computers to us because there were these ginormous things, and we were like, "What are you doing?" And they were like, "Oh, we bought our own." And so it was really exciting to see that happen. Then we had the Beaumont Grant, where fourth graders, we got laptops for all the fourth graders at Ray. Our mistake there was also giving them those like bright red backpacks that just said, "Target." But we learned along the way, and so that was really successful. Gabe Del Real was the teacher of the, at the time. Then we, the EETT Grant, which really got us starting, started in the Costa Mesa Zone with Netbooks. And so that was an exciting time to, to start doing that one-to-one, so that was 2009. 2014, we replaced the Netbooks with Chromebooks, and that was our first large-scale Chromebook deployment. And we also rolled out the iPad as a teaching tool program, which now we have, I mean, our teachers are just, they cannot teach without that, it's, yeah, it is. So it's exciting, over 900 teachers are using iPads. And then 2016 was year one of our Chromebook initiative, as you know, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about that, so this is now. So we're in year two of our Chromebook initiative. And in case you don't remember, this is a graphic that Martha Felix put together for us. But just to give you, remind you, so K2 classrooms right now share a cart of Chromebooks with other, the grade level, but they also have six Chromebooks each in their classrooms so that they can do things on them. Fourth, third and fourth grade students have one-to-one in their classrooms, but they stay in their classrooms. And then fifth, sixth, and seventh grade, if you're in year one, we basically check out a Chromebook to a student as if it was a library book, and we really don't want to see it for four years, right? So we, we have transition going on, so Estancia was year one. So year two for Estancia, all incoming fifth graders got Chromebooks. The fifth took it to sixth, sixth took it to seventh, seventh to eighth. And we gave all ninth graders Chromebooks. And then we started Newport Harbor Zone with the same initial model, so fifth through seventh grade all got one-to-one Chromebooks checked out to them.
And every year, the fifth grade gets, once it's rolled out?
Thank you, because that's my next slide.
Good evening, President Snell, Board Members, and Dr. Navarro, and Cabinet. I'll take over from here. I'm in IT, so the chart that's really busy and doesn't look pretty is my work. You can see there, the, the blue shaded areas are really the periods when we roll out new Chromebooks to each zone. So we started last year with the Estancia Zone, and that's the first blue square in the upper left. And then every year, we move, this year we moved to Newport Harbor Zone. And our plan now is to supplement the existing Chromebook program at Costa Mesa Zone this year and move on to Corona Del Mar Zone next year, starting in September. What, the other things you see on the chart there is really the support for existing technology that's in the classroom. We still have labs, we still have student computers and laptops in the classrooms because at the high school level and at the middle school level, we're not immediately replacing all the, everything with Chromebooks. So it's a staged rollout over four years. And it's a little bit more work for everybody, but it gives us the opportunity to manage, to make it sustainable and manageable in terms of cost and staffing commitments. So as Jenneth said, once we, once we stabilize this and we get to a regular rollout, basically every year, fifth and ninth graders will get a brand-new Chromebook. Until something else comes around that's not a Chromebook. But that's the plan in a nutshell. It is a bit of work for IT, it's a bit of work for ed tech in terms of training for teachers, training for other staff on campus. We have a lot of support from, from site staff in terms of day-to-day support and assistance to teachers. But it's working out, and we're gonna go into our third year, starting in September.
That's amazing. On the very top in the yellow, I got 2,600 CB Chromebooks, got that?
That's right.
But 2,000 Windows?
That's, that's approximately 2,000 Windows computers that we're still replacing this year to keep the staff and students at the secondary schools working. So we're still having to do support for all of our existing technology while we're rolling out Chromebooks. So the 2,600 Chromebooks in 1617, 4,000 Chromebooks this year, plus 1,000, give or take, that schools funded with their own money, over 4,300 Chromebooks next year, and then it settles around 4,200 Chromebooks in perpetuity, essentially.
So, job security.
Yes.
Okay, wait. So Mrs. Black has a question.
I was gonna ask, so how are you maintaining these? Are you maintaining?
We are, and.
How are you doing that? Because I can barely maintain my, my.
You know, especially with Chromebooks, we're, we've been using Windows for a long time, and we have tools and knowledge that, you know, that helps us in that regard. But Chromebooks are still new to everybody, and they're, they're kind of always evolving. What they were, what Chromebooks could do last year is different than what they can do this year. And they'll have different capabilities next year. So from the tech support perspective, we're learning as we go, and it changes all the time. But also from the teacher perspective, teachers find that what they were doing last year doesn't necessarily work quite the same, so they have to adjust their lesson plans. That's where Jenneth's team comes in with assistance and training. So it's, it's a, there's a learning curve for everybody involved, but so far, we're managing quite well, I believe.
Wow.
Okay, Mrs. Flor.
Yeah, so noticing here, and this is kind of selfish, but I have a seventh grader at Corona Del Mar. And she'll be an eighth grader next year, and she, and you're rolling out to, but you're not rolling out to eighth grade. So she'll have to wait, she will not, she won't get, she will not be able to park none, the eighth grader, the eighth graders are, regardless of what group, they're missing, they're not getting to get the Chromebook.
Good news is, several schools already have some Chromebooks on campus, and Corona Del Mar is one of those schools. So as we roll out the district-funded initiatives, some of the Chromebooks may roll into the other grade levels that are not immediately supported by the district initiative.
Devices that were shared across the school now get, you know, to be put into.
Okay, because it'll happen, it'll happen at every single, that eighth grade is the, they don't get them at all. They don't, they won't, they won't be able to get them.
Year one, they get.
Year one.
Year two, they get them.
So they have to wait, they have to wait a year, even though everybody else will have them. Okay, got it. Okay, just curious.
So right now, our number of Chromebooks are, is pretty high. Right, whoa, that's what I said. So ed tech has had to get really creative as far as professional development. And so I'd like to bring up Martha Felix, one of my ed tech toses, which I'm sure you all know as well, to talk to you about how we started to think outside of the box when it came to professional development.
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much. We always love this, this chance to be in front of you and to share and just be, we're just so excited about what's going on, and so to have the chance to, to talk about it with you all is great. So here are a couple ways that we're thinking outside of the box. So we have two coaching models that we thought we would like to share with you all tonight. So the first is our Digital Fellow Program. And this is a program we are tremendously excited and proud about. So the Digital Fellow Program is, classroom teachers can apply to become a Digital Fellow. So in the year one, they're basically working one-on-one with one of the ed tech coaches, and they develop themselves in the area of technology and using it with their own students and in their own classrooms. Year two, they're, continue to grow and learn themselves, but it's also, they start providing some monthly staff development to their sites. Now year three, we have select digital fellows that move on and become coaches. So we call them digital coaches. And now they're really, they're still learning, we're always learning, but they're really taking on a lot of PD for their sites and their teachers. So essentially, we're building these leaders in technology, right? We're duplicating ourselves, we're extending our department at the site. So currently, we have 35 fellows and coaches, so that's really exciting. Another thing we wanted to share with you all tonight were our ed tech office hours. So we're, that's our little name forum, the office hours, but they're actually out at the school site. So this is brand-new this year, and what ed tech does is we provide a roving substitute that releases the teachers voluntarily, they sign up, and they meet with one of us, one-on-one, for, you know, a short amount of time, 35, 45 minutes. But what we found is that they're able to meet with us on whatever they want. So we are really meeting their needs, because as I'm sure you know, the needs of our teachers, there are beginners out there, intermediate and advanced teachers in the area of technology. So we have been able to get out to 19 sites. So 19 sites took advantage of this opportunity for our first go-round. And the feedback has been great, and you can see, we quoted one up there. It was so awesome, best training I've had in a long, long time, please offer it again. So, so far, you know, we sent out for feedback, and so far, most sites say, "Yes, please, we would love to have it again."
That's so exciting, because, I'm sorry, I just knew I was the only red button. Because when you are not the Digital Fellow or the Digital Coach, sometimes it's embarrassing to say, you know, "I'm really having trouble knowing exactly where the USB port is, and I don't want to ask anyone." So with a one-on-one, you can ask, feel comfortable asking a question that, and if, that you might not want to ask otherwise. And it's specific, sometimes as you work, a specific question comes up, and you know it's only, you know you're the only person in the world that's ever had that question.
Yes, we, we had a teacher walk in who, she looked around the room, and she said, "It's only me?" And we said, "Yes," and she said, "Oh, my gosh." And just for that reason, she doesn't ask in front of her colleagues because she feels silly. And, you know, so it's been an exciting, we're really also proud of this program as well.
We have a couple more questions, I hope you don't mind interrupting your flow, Mrs. Yelsey.
Just a quick question, how often do you get to each of those 19 sites?
So this is the first year of the program, so we, we sent it out to the principals and said, "Is anyone interested?" 19 sites said, "Yes, we are." They chose different dates that we were available. So at this time, we've only been out once to those 19 sites.
And do you all go to one school in a day, or are you?
So let's say Adams, for example, Elementary signed up for a date, so one of the toses went out, and we went out, and so we were there the whole day at Adams. And we saw, you know, it varies between six to eight teachers probably in a day. Yeah, so, not to mention when you're in the lounge and passing folks, you get to help more people, you know, on the fly as well.
Absolutely, one more, Mrs. Flor.
Is it only available to teachers, or can some of our classified, is it, you know?
I'm so glad you asked that, because. I'm so glad you asked that, because originally, we were thinking it would be for teachers. But at one school site, all the slots didn't fill up for varying reasons. And so I had the librarian reach out to us and say, "Can I grab this site?" I mean, this slot, excuse me. And of course, we thought, yes, we'd rather the slot be taken than empty. So yeah, we supported the librarian and some different things she wanted to do with Google, and yes, so.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Not yet.
So, right, so we thought, what better than to actually have two of our Fellows come and talk to you tonight? So the first one is a year-one Digital Fellow, so this is her first year in the program, and it's Rachel Cloppenberg from Costa Mesa.
Okay.
First, thank you so much for the opportunity to come and share with you. Like she said, I am a year-one Digital Fellow. I teach at Costa Mesa High School. I teach math, Math 1, Math 3, and honors Math 3 this year. So the reason I was interested in the program, sorry, I got confused, is that I just really wanted the opportunity to learn more about how I can use technology in my classroom. I've never considered myself like a really techie person. I don't know how to fix the computer, but I know that the technology can help me teach, it can make my job easier, and it can make it more interesting for the students. It can help my students be more engaged. And that is something, you know, that I struggle with, with teaching math, is how do I get my students engaged and interested? So I really just saw this as a great opportunity. And also, I just, I wanted to, in the future, be able to help my fellow teachers. So what I really gained from this program, first, I feel like I've gained just so much collaboration that I didn't have before. I meet at least once a month with my coach Christine, who's awesome. Sometimes more, she'll come in, sometimes twice a month. And she just sits down, and we talk about, hey, where am I at? What am I struggling with? What are my lessons looking at, like, right now? And she just suggests, like, have you tried this with technology? Have you tried this? Sometimes it's been really simple things. I like to post with my homework assignments, help videos from YouTube. And she suggested, hey, why don't you put them in a playlist, so you don't have to find them later? And my students at the end of the unit can look back at the playlist and have all of the help videos. Well, that was just revolutionary to me. So that was great. And since then, I've been able to share that with my fellow colleagues and just little fixes, and having her support there. She also was able to get Chromebooks in my classroom this year, which was awesome, because you guys saw on the presentation, Costa Mesa Zone comes a little late in the Chromebook rollout. So just having those there and learning more of how to use those in the day-to-day has been awesome. And my students love it, and I see, when we get the Chromebooks out, their faces light up. So just having tools and tips and just strategies has been great. So I really feel like I've grown and I've become more confident in having that collaboration. We've also worked on a couple of projects. First was a project for my Math 1 students, and so, I think that's the next slide? Yeah. So with Math 1, a lot of what I talked to Christine about is just my struggles, because it's a really tough course to teach, because you have students that are really low and students that are really high. And we also have a lot of English learners. So I really wanted an opportunity to show growth, and I wanted my students to be able to show their learning, even if sometimes they're not mastering those standards yet. So, so we decided that a portfolio would be really cool. So Christine came in, and we talked about, okay, so many different ways that I could house these portfolios and teach my students to use portfolios. We landed on Google Sites as being the easiest for them and probably the most useful. So they each created a Google Site, and every unit, they would go in and they would reflect on their learning, and they would post a, kind of summarize the unit, post some of their examples. And it was just a really powerful project for them. So I have an example, I'm going to click on. So this one is not the best I received, but I thought it was just a cool one to bring up, because this is Anderson, and he's an English learner, Level 1. And so for him to just be in the classroom and be getting on the computer and summarizing what his math journey was about, and then each unit, we went through and we talked about, okay, what is a function, and then they made a page. Linear functions made a page, exponential functions made a page. So that was his homepage.
He loves them.
I'll take you to his sequences.
Cool.
This is one cool. So he kind of got to summarize, okay, what is a sequence? I can't get it to scroll. Oh, there you go. And then he even was able to post, we took pictures of the Chromebook, not the best picture, we're still working on that. But some examples he came up with is on his own, and it just was a really cool project. So, and I don't think I could have done it without Christine's help and collaboration. And it's actually something I'm excited for Digital Day in April that I'm presenting on. And another teacher, I shared this project with, one of my colleagues that teaches math, she's going to present with me on it, so. I'm excited, it's been a good year, and yeah. So it's a very, I've very much enjoyed the Digital Fellow Program. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a lot of work, thank you.
It's been fun.
All right, next, I would like to introduce our Digital Coach. So this is Karen Brosenley from Lincoln, and she's in the third year, so.
Teacher of the year.
Good evening, yes, I've been here before. So I am a third-year Digital Fellow Coach, as Martha said, and I teach third grade at Lincoln. And I just wanted to share that really what the Digital Fellow Program has given me in abundance is confidence. Confidence to jump into tech strategies, that there's no way I would have tried myself with 30 little bodies next to me without her being there by my side. I have the confidence to push myself, to really extend my learning and my students' learning through enriching and engaging lessons that end up being engaging and enriching for me as well. Confidence to collaborate using Google Drive with my students. They, we have shared folders that they can access resources in order to foster their own independence and responsibility. So I don't have to get that. I don't, I forgot my math homework book, well, it's in Google Drive, and they find it. I don't really get that comment coming back. I also found the confidence to really inspire my colleagues. That might be one of my most favorite parts of the program, through professional development, to take some leaps of their own in their technology growth. And in guiding them, I always find inspiration for myself and get great ideas. So I've been able to do my own one-on-one coaching, like, office hours at my site for my teachers as well. In fact, we coordinated it with Martha coming out and kind of got a two-day worth at our school. Some samples of my student work is here that I've accomplished with the support of this amazing program and Martha Felix, my tech coach, are green screen videos of character interviews. We also did student-created websites, so that students could showcase their, all of their work found in, mostly in Google, but also their digital, I mean, their green screen videos as well. And students are so proud to create their own website. When they went on to fourth grade, my students from last year, this teacher's asked them, "Has anyone in here who's ever made a website?" And they all raised their hand, and she was like, "What?" So now, she's asking me, how do I help them make a website? So they've created websites again. We have also used the QR codes to then be able to share those websites with their families. Also, at Lincoln, I've been able to provide staff support through technology professional development for my whole staff on topics such as Google Forms, that was just from a couple weeks ago. Also, being a Digital Fellow, and now a Digital Coach, has given me the opportunity to support teachers across the district. These China maps here were made by Mariners, sixth graders, in collaboration with their teacher. So I was able to have a day to work with her, to plan it, and then to go over and actually teach the lesson with her. And to show them and my, her students, one of my, really my favorite Google app, which is Google Drawings, which my students use all the time. So I'm very appreciative of the professional growth that the Digital Fellow Program has given me, and I really hope they have a plan for year four. Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we.
All right, so we want to jump in to talk a little bit about innovation, specifically robotics and engineering design. Kristy Darnell is going to come up, and I don't want to forget to mention that Melissa Price is here, but she's, because we were told that we couldn't be here all night, she's not going to come up and speak, but I want to acknowledge her, because she does a ton for us, so.
Good evening. Thanks so much for the opportunity to share about robotics and engineering design. So I wanted to just go over some of our robotics programs. And the first one I'd like to discuss is our Dash STEM Kit program that we have. We started this program last year where we had a checkout system for all of our elementary schools. And the kit would be taken to the schools, and it was these little blue robots, and the kids would code these programs and use the robots. And then Ed Services was able to provide 20, all 22 schools with their own STEM kits this year. And so it's been really fun pushing into the classrooms and helping the teachers and modeling lessons and working with the kids. You can see in the picture down there on the left, what they do is they code, they use the iPad, and they code a path for the robot to follow the path. So the kit also comes with a ton of other lessons. Another program that we have going on is our VEX IQ program. And that is in our elementary schools. We have 17 elementary schools that are doing VEX IQ robotics right now. That's actually up from last year. We have three new schools this year that started clubs. And these schools are either doing robotics in the curriculum that goes with these programs in the classroom or as an after-school club. And then all of our secondary schools have advanced robotics programs, either through Project Lead the Way or through their own pathway programs. Another robotics program that we have going on, and this is actually a new program this year, is our NMUSD VEX IQ League. So we decided that we wanted, we really wanted to provide students with the opportunity to build robots and redesign robots, and also compete with those robots, with other schools within our district. We saw that students were starting to do this in pockets in various schools, and they were talking about it. And so we wanted to try to give this opportunity to every student that was interested in that type of competitive nature with VEX IQ. So we formed this league, and some of the schools jumped right on it and said, "Yes, we want to participate." And some of them were a little bit hesitant and will probably participate next year. So this year, we have nine schools actually participating in the league, which means that they're building robots and redesigning them, and then scrimmaging. These were our recent pictures from two weeks ago. So this was round one, and we matched up the schools, and they had a blast. And so now, we will have round two and round three. Round two will be in April, and round three will be in May. And then at the end of the rounds, we'll rank the schools, and the top four elementary schools will have the opportunity to compete at our district competition. We are still having our district competition. This year, it's going to focus more on the secondary schools. They have a different robot. It's also made by VEX, but it's called VEX EDR, so it's a different robot. And so I'll talk a little bit about the robotics competition, which is going to, it's our third annual. We've learned a lot along the way from year one, when we were down there hammering and building our own fields. But now, so it's going to be Saturday, June 9th, I hope everybody can come. We have five secondary schools competing this year. They're listed right there. And then the top four schools from the elementary league that I was just talking about, we're going to give them an opportunity to have their own little round-robin competition, hopefully at the event. And then it allows them to see what they'll be moving to with the secondary program. Another thing that this intra-district competition does is it prepares them for a highly competitive national VEX League. And that's something that we hope to pursue and expand into in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's all right, I did it right, so I...
Mrs. Toye, did it right.
The competition, last year, one of the things that amazed me the most, that I was most proud of, what amazed me the most and I was most proud of, was part of the competition was competing with someone as a partner that was not your normal partner, maybe from a rival school, and the two of you had to work together in order to get the points, is that still included?
Yes, so that's called the Teamwork Challenge. And the students have to form an alliance, and they have to strategize with each other. And then they do the challenge.
It was very cool.
Yes, that's what we're doing in our league, and we always say to the students, "Did you strategize yet?" before we start the round, so it's fun.
Thank you. And are the nine, are the nine schools representative of Costa Mesa and Newport Beach?
In the league, yes.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so it would be remiss with all this technology not to discuss digital citizenship. We definitely take this serious. We are, we consider ourselves to be helping to raise responsible digital citizens, because it's something we can't do alone. We need teachers, parents, our leaders, everyone involved, community. Currently, we have teacher education and awareness. We partnered with Common Sense Media years ago. We took that content and actually broke it down and put it in a more accessible format for teachers, broken down by grade level, put pacing guides together for them by grade level. And we celebrate, you know, October's Cyber Safety Month, but really, this should be something that's happening every day. So it's an area we're working towards. We do parent education any chance we get. We meet with PTA, PFO groups and talk to them. Looking forward, based on survey results, and we'll share a little highlights of the survey with you in just a minute, but we're going to look at just a little more accountability back, you know, down to the teacher level as far as making sure that this is happening everywhere, because, you know, there's so much to teach every day. But we're just working with, trying to integrate it into their lessons, right? So that it's not one more thing that they have to do. But while they're teaching math or teaching English, they can also talk about something that has to do with digital, you know, safety. So we're also partnering with Student Services. Is Phil in here? Yes, we're going to do the road show, right, Phil? We're going on the road, so we'll tell you more about that when it's ready. So Awesome and I have been wanting to use Bright Bites forever. It's a company that basically uses research and has a framework to help you analyze the technology out there. So we haven't looked at teacher proficiency or what we're doing in a really long time, and it was time. So we did our first collection in January with three weeks. We had amazing results. I mean, I have to thank the schools for this, the principals, teachers, and parents and students that did it. But for our first go-round, 717 teachers and administrators took this survey. Ten, you know, almost 11,000 students, that's huge. You know what it's like to get people to take surveys. So, and almost 3,000 parents and guardians. So we were really excited. Bright Bites even said that for our first data collection, that was, you know, phenomenal. Just to briefly talk about the framework for the survey, they focus on four areas. Classroom, and as you can see, four Cs, digital citizenship, assessment, assistive technology, access, which of course, we're all interested in at school and at home, skills, super important, foundational, online and multimedia, and then the environment. And this has to do with policies, procedures, practice, the support that comes from us. So it looks at your IT ET support, professional learning, and just overall beliefs. You know, this is kind of the culture. We, we're doing great. I mean, I'm not going to say we're perfect by far, but if you'll notice, overall, out of everyone that took the surveys, we're 1066, which up here, you'll notice, beginning, emerging, proficient, advanced, and exemplary. We're 28 points away from being advanced, and we beat the California standard in every area. So, you know, and then it does break down by school. If you look at this... If you look at this, classroom and environment are the two hardest things to work on, right? We're doing great in access and skills, but if you think about pedagogy and changing and what you're learning and how you're teaching, we know we're working towards that. And environment as far as culture and making those shifts, but we, we're still have no gray areas. So, we, that's exciting, you know? I definitely think that's exciting. I think we're, everyone is working so, so hard. Teachers, you know, administrators, all of you, classified, everyone. So, Awesome's going to talk to you a little bit about the results of the access at home and school.
So, like Jeanette said, this went out to a lot of people and the first time ever, we had a really huge response. This is way beyond my usual 3% or 4% read and answer rate on my surveys. And so, the part we wanted to point out was the access at home piece. And on this first slide, on the left side, you have teachers who have access at home and they have a device at home. The right-hand side is student answers. And 95% of our 11,000 students said they have access to internet at home. 95%. And a couple of percent answered, I don't know. So, but they answered. And then there were three or four percent that said, no. So, that was, you know, different than we expected in many ways. But it did line up with some of the surveys we did in-house during registration. We did surveys at T-Winkle and Enson and Estancia for the schools that were receiving Chrome, for the students that were receiving Chromebooks. And those answers line up very closely with the Bright Bites survey, which is clearly much, much larger. What the survey confirmed for us is what we believed before, that our bigger issue, more pressing issue was access to a device at home. 48% of our students said they either share, share a device. 92% said they have a device at home, but 48% said they share a device with somebody else at home. So, that shows us that our one-to-one program project is helping give students a dedicated device they can use for homework and schoolwork at home. And this was a slide that shows parent answers. And we had about 28, 2800, 2900 parents answer. 98% of our parents said they have access at home that can be used from a Chromebook. So, that lines up with the student answers and lines up with our other surveys. So, we're on the right track. We still have to, we have to reach the students who don't have access. But the problem does not appear to be as great as we thought it was. And we do have several options on the table. We're looking at hotspots that we can provide to students who don't have access. We're looking at possibility of maybe extending some of the district wireless into the neighborhood where possible, with, you know, where there's a need and opportunity. But we're looking at every option we have available to us.
Oh, Awesome, I have a question.
Yes.
So, these percentages are based district-wide who took. So, do you have, are you able to pull the numbers out and find out what area those numbers come from?
By school.
By school, yeah, by school zone.
Bright Bites survey is anonymous, so we can't get an answer on a specific student. But we can't get numbers more specific to a single, individual school. So, what our plan is going forward is during registration, summer registration or registration for next school year, we're going to ask at both secondary and elementary level, this question specifically to an individual student. So then, we can identify each individual student that may not have access at home and we can, we can work with them directly.
At least by zone. Because you also mentioned when you gave out the ninth grade Chromebooks that you asked the question then.
Yes.
And so, do you remember what that data was? Because I know Estancia started, so.
I do remember what that data was.
Wow!
So, Estancia, ninth graders, we asked only the ninth graders because they were the only ones getting Chromebooks. 7% said they don't know or don't have an internet access home of all the ninth graders. At T-Winkle, that number was about seven and a half, eight percent. At Enson, it was less than 4%.
Wow.
Right.
Okay, that's surprising.
So, that was our initial survey into this question. And then we also looked at in IT, we have the ability to look at our usage on our wireless network. And so, we started looking at, you know, Saturdays and Sundays between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM, what kind of usage is there? And there's definitely devices connecting, but most of them are connected, almost all of them are connecting to our guest wireless and their iPhones and iPads and Android phones. Very small number of our own Chromebooks. And the location that the system shows us is usually in the classroom. It's not in the parking lots. It's not in the, you know, on the field. So, all of this data sort of lines up that we do have some definite need, but the need may not be as substantial as we thought.
Yeah.
So, we have to rethink what sort of approach we can take with the problem.
We're still working on it.
We're trying to figure out the real need.
Good.
All right. So, just because we're running over here, I probably am over. Just a couple of other highlights that were interesting was that teachers feel that they're encouraged to use technology at their school, which to me shows that there is, you know, that our leaders are doing a great job. The culture is shifting. It's just becoming, you know, I mean, I'd love it when we don't even use the word "technology" because it just is. And they want to learn more about effective technology used for teaching and learning, which is my job security. And we would love more time with them. I think that's our biggest struggle is getting access to the teachers. And students feel that they, that using the technology enhances their learning, which is great. Here's just some things for us, you know, we definitely have areas of growth and that's one thing that we wanted to get from this survey. So, you know, what we, what we found out from this is kids know how to use social media. They know how to take video. They know how to take photos and text and do all that. But their foundational skills, they need work on, right? And that's, that's hard to get that into the classroom and fit that in. So, that's like email. That's productivity tools, right? That's where the Chromebooks again come into, you know, come into a good use of. And then, again, digital citizenship skills here shows that students don't feel like they're getting, you know, that. And it also, you'll see in the next slide, shows teachers need more support in that area too. So, that's definitely one of our focuses. But overall, teachers feel good about their foundational skills, you know, proficient, yellow is proficient, blue is, you know, exemplary. So, I think overall, we're doing well and we definitely have some areas that we're going to look at based on these results. The future, who knows? But the immediate future, I think we already got a pitch for it. April 28th is our Digital Learning Day, our third annual. And I am excited to say, we, this year, we extended it and now classified is involved. And so, we have certificated and classified all coming and presenting to each other. So, we're going to have classified employees and presenting to classified. And, and so, look out for that. And maybe one of you guys want to come and present? All right. And so, the last thing I have to do is Matthew Jennings, I think you all know him, worked hard and long on this video. And it's amazing. It just does a quick wrap-up of everything that's happening out in our classrooms all over the district. And so, I wish I had popcorn, but sit back and.
At Newport Mesa, we strive to inspire students for a lifetime. We work to provide our students with the advantages, opportunities and the technology needed to turn their talents into something great for their local, national and global communities. Today, technology seamlessly integrates with traditional methods of instruction. In the classroom, it is as common as a pencil was 50 years ago. Technology is the fabric that weaves academics together at every grade level throughout NMUSD. For example, students able to learn at home pace using digitally connected devices may be following along in real time to a video lesson, gathering research for a project or completing assignments in a digital environment. Classrooms themselves are undergoing significant change. Spaces previously used for computer labs and other open areas around our canvases are being converted into maker spaces and innovation labs. In these creative spaces, students can learn skills such as engineering, design, robotics, computer software design, create using green screens and so much more. Some of our innovation labs even contain advanced machinery such as wind tunnels for aerospace design, lades and mills for computer integrated manufacturing, 3D printers for design and modeling and computer aided design classes. Of course, these spaces are configured differently in elementary than they are at the higher grade levels and they are even customizable from school to school. In the classrooms of today, technology is a partner to traditional methods of instruction. Students can read a story in their textbook and then test for reading comprehension right at their desk, on their digital device, at their own pace. Students are still putting pencil to paper, so to speak, but they are getting instant feedback now as their digital device can help them focus on areas of need. In flexible learning environments, students working in digitally connected classrooms are now not only working at their own pace, but also in a specific environment that inspires them to focus and work harder. Teachers themselves are no longer confined to the front of the room and are now able to move around the classroom and work with individuals or groups of students. We focus tremendous energy on training staff and parents on how to effectively use digital devices as teaching tools. Our Digital Fellows program helps prepare teachers interested in integrating more technologies into their classroom. These teachers learn important skills through a two-year training program and ultimately, become ambassadors at their school sites and work to support fellow teachers interested in using more tech. With the new state standards, students are required to think more critically and at deeper levels. Skills such as coding can teach students critical and logical thinking, problem solving, sequencing and mapping. And robots put this hard effort into something students can visualize. At the elementary level, students begin to manipulate blocks of code in an effort to get Dash robots to perform specific tasks. As students progress through the higher grade levels, they move on to Vex robots, in which the students design the robots while learning and mastering more complex coding techniques. Through flexible learning environments, maker spaces for creative expression and collaboration, digitally connected devices, advanced and sophisticated machinery and a qualified and dedicated army of teachers and staff, our students will not only be prepared for college and the workforce now, but also many unforeseen jobs and demands of the future that may not even exist yet. Our district is focused on ensuring that all students and staff have access to purposeful, functioning technology, an understanding of the importance of using technology responsibly and the students and parents alike can provide resources on digital citizenship. The excitement and the smiles we see when we put the latest technology into the hands of our students tells us that we are providing them with unique and inspiring opportunities.
Wow, very good. Really cool.
Bravo, Matthew.
Bravo.
Cool. Cool, cool, cool. That Newport Mesa place is pretty cool. Pretty cool.
Are we pushing that video out? We are? Okay, good. As well as being on the web. Yeah, that, amazing. Yeah. Thanks so much for your, you and your team and, and the teachers that were able to come. It's, this is exciting for us to see. We know this is going on, but it's exciting to see it all together. And I'm especially excited with the teachers that are coaching and, and I think it's, it's great. You can do that at your own school. Your, probably your peers are much more comfortable asking you questions and, and getting advice on how to do the, to work the computers and do the programs and integrate it into teaching. So, it's, it's great. It's absolutely great. And I would really like a copy of your presentation. I started taking notes and then I'm like, no. Ms. Matoye.
It was fabulous. Thank you. I know how hard you work and I know how the one-on-one program is fabulous because that's what happens when I pop in, I, how do I, I lost it. It's so good to have your help. And Karen, it was neat to have, to see you with your iPad stuck to your hand like I said. Thank you for modeling that. Question for you. Is part of our digital citizenship program, when to put it down?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
And I mean, we're not, teachers aren't, technology is not a 24/7 thing. You, we all know that. Teachers know that. It's, you know, there's not.
But kids don't.
But in the classroom, they do. It just needs to be modeled at home and in the classroom.
Exactly.
And there's a time and a place for it. There's still a time and a place for getting, rolling your sleeves up and, you know, using manipulatives and getting outside. So, screen time is a big topic right now and we're definitely focused on it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Martha, do you have any closing, any?
Just fabulous. Unbelievable, unbelievable.
I'm looking forward to the race.
Okay, Mrs. Yelsey.
Yeah, I just want to, I, I know what you do with the kids in the school is great, but I really appreciate you going out to your parent education.
Right.
Because, you know, five years ago, it was really tough to get parents to come out, any kind of presentation, especially at night. And I know now, parents I see when there's something presented at a school involving citizenry or bullying, you know, whatever it is with the digital age, they are craving information. And they really appreciate when you come out and try to help them navigate this because they're learning too.
Right, yeah.
So, that's, I think that's a really strong component.
Definitely an important area. Especially for the, us older folks, we're called technology aliens or something because we.
Immigrants.
Immigrants, yeah. We, it's, it's really a struggle. And I find, I have trouble getting off the.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, I had, yeah. I've started, I've had to put my.
I just tweeted.
You tweeted where you said that, yeah.
I do have a comment.
Oh, Mrs. Flor.
Yeah, one thing that was, what I really am impressed about is in all of these programs, you're allowing children to trial and error and to fail. And teaching them perseverance and continuing to strive to be the best. And, and, you know, they're using, they're using high-powered equipment, those digital. Those, what are they?
The manufacturing.
No, the manufacturing, the 3D, the 3D printers. I mean, they have to be pretty precise, but here, and they are expensive. They're 40, $50,000 pieces of equipment in those high schools. And yet, we're allowing children to, to participate and provide them the opportunity to say, oh, can I make this? And so, we have kids developing robotic arms.
Right.
It's just amazing. But I thank you for that too, because I think that's really important, that kids have a safe place to try it. Try it. Doesn't work, try it again.
Adults too.
Yeah, exactly.
Adults too, yeah.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Navarro.
Yes, before we go to public comment, I wanted to respond to some of the statements that have been made during public comment. I know that last time, a speaker stood up and talked about how the community has a right to express themselves orally and make their point to the board. What we don't have a right to is our own set of facts, okay? The data's the data, the facts are the facts. And so, right now, I'd like to address some of the inaccuracies that have been made regarding a lawsuit that was filed against the district, in particular, against me. So, I'm not going to disclose any confidential issues or any personnel information. But I would like to say that the plaintiffs in that case agreed to dismiss the complaint. They agreed to indemnify and hold me free of, hold me free and harmless from any and all damages, including, including any claims and expenses, which meant we didn't even pay their attorney fees. And that, if you're in the education world, is unusual, that we don't end up having to pay attorney fees. I think that speaks to the, to the, the type of lawsuit they have filed. I hope that this serves as proof to the public that while our district may receive claims and lawsuits, that we, that this doesn't automatically indicate any fault, okay? We act in the best interest of our students, our staff, our community, and we abide by all laws and procedures when dealing with litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, community input.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the, on the consent. Got the wrong one, sorry. I apologize for reading this. On, on consent calendar, agenda items or non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Per Board Policy 9323, each individual speaker will have three minutes to cover one or multiple topics and speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers. And there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. The board, staff and members of the public may request that a specific item on consent be moved to the discussion action. Requests to remove, to move consent items must be received prior to the time the board takes action on the consent calendar. All comments are recorded in full on the meeting video record that is posted as a courtesy on our website at www.nmusd.us. DVD copies of the complete meeting are available to check out from the superintendent's office for three days or for purchase for $1.
Okay. Our first speaker is Laurie. Our first speaker is Lori Smith.
Good evening, board members. Lori Smith, retired Newport Mesa teacher, parent of two students and of one, grandparent of one's current student. I'm here to talk about, continue the discussion from earlier today, for those of you who didn't know, in the audience, there was a study session about the HVAC, the AC units being installed and the plan for that. And a discussion started about a heat policy. And this has been brought up numerous times, as I mentioned, our, the union representative, Britt Doughty, has brought it up for the teachers to represent them, numerous community members have talked about it. The other part of the story, because Dr. Navarro finished off the discussion at the end of the study session comment period for the public, he mentioned that we do have an OSHA policy. Well, OSHA policy does not include specifics for indoor workplace temperatures. Also, to clarify what's happening on the campuses, there's an equity issue, and I think the principals struggle with it, I know the parents and the teachers do. So, for each campus to have their own plan, individualized, which sounds ideal, in reality, we need a comprehensive district policy, because some campuses, even this last heat, extreme days that went on in October, November, early November, some campuses actually, the second day let their, the principals let the kids go home early. That wasn't happening across the district, that's not equitable. Also, teachers at a specific campus will have their friends come in, so if they're in an air-conditioned portable, they'll call their friend's classroom and say, hey, bring your group, you know, over here, and they'll double up. And, and that's, that's not equitable either. So, those are issues if we do not have a district-wide policy. The other thing, and, and again, we, other people have these policies, other districts, I should say, San Diego Unified, Long Beach Unified, comprehensive programs, several pages typed, it's very clear, everybody gets it, they even have it very specified with numbers, what district policy number it is, outlined for minimum, you know, when their, when the, the main office is going to call for a minimum day requirement, what needs to be met. Britt Doughty, the teachers' union presidents, wrote to the Daily Pilot in October of seventeen, I believe on October 27th, if you didn't get to see the article, and he addressed all these things. These are not new points that I'm making. We need to look at our models, we need to look at San Diego Unified, its pages, got it right here, we need to revisit what he's asked for, thank you, and get a heat policy. No call.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roy Engelbrecht.
Thank you, my name is Roy Engelbrecht, I'm a forty-year resident of Newport Beach. My daughter Allison and my son Drew are graduates of the Newport Mesa Unified School District System. Further disclaimer, I am a candidate for the Newport Beach City Council in the November election, and also currently a commissioner on the City of Newport Beach Park Beaches and Recreation Commission. And I'm here because I had this idea last week. Certainly, school safety is at the forefront of pretty much every media outlet and on the agenda, future agenda, most school boards in our country. I know that one of your projects is the Corona del Mar High School Stadium. And I had a thought, that project is probably going to be about $8 million, said and done. You have thirty-two, thirty-four schools in your system. Do you realize that with $8 million, you could train and equip not one, but two armed security officers at every school in your district for the next three years? So I think this is a decision, a choice that you have to make. A, a stadium that impacts relatively few, or a project that will impact tens of thousands. As a parent, I hope, and I'm sure this community hopes, that you will make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Steve Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Snell, good evening, everyone. At the special meeting of March 2nd, several members of the public took time out of their morning to offer some community input. One of them, Erica Roberts, said something that upset at least a couple of you, who then chose to scold her as she left the podium with no chance to reply. As you stormed out of the room, Mrs. Snell, you said first to Mrs. Roberts and then to the rest of us, you should be ashamed of yourself, all of you. Mrs. Snell, you ignored years of teacher and parent complaints about a faulty math program, and you say shame on us. At Adams Elementary School, walking distance from your home, parents are still choosing to send their kids elsewhere because of low academic performance, and you say shame on us. At Estanci High School, eighty-three percent of the eleventh graders failed to meet the 2017 state standard for math, and you say shame on us. Mrs. Snell, by leading the charge to get rid of that math program, Erica Roberts has accomplished more for the students in this district in, in one year than you have in almost six as a trustee. And attending ribbon cuttings, school plays, graduation ceremonies, and rubber stamping, everything doesn't count.
Thank you, and again, your facts are incorrect. I have not been on the board for six years, and there are several other facts you got incorrectly. Bye. Okay. Next speaker is Paula Gibbons.
Good evening. My name is Paula Gibbons, and I'm representative of NMFT as a vice principal of middle school. And I wanted to talk about a couple of things. One, as far as the, Jennifer Michney and her tech group, they are amazing. I've learned a lot from their group, and so I, I offer them congratulations on what they've done. And IT is awesome also, not just awesome, but awesome.
Awesome, awesome.
And I think you should send those pictures to Betsy DeVos, because I think she needs a new photo album.
Yeah, she does.
But what I want to talk about is strategic plans and safety plans in our district. And middle school teachers, I know, are talking, I'm, I'm sure other teachers are, I'm hearing from middle school teachers are talking about school safety, and right now, they're scared. They're buying devices that clip on the, the hinges on the doors, so that even if a doorknob was blown off by a gun, an intruder could not get in. They are talking about how best to address the walkout that's planned for tomorrow, what to say to students, what to do. We, we practice our intruder drills, just like they did at Stoneman Douglas, but I think honestly, we're living in a time of a false sense of security, that we feel like we're sitting ducks. I guess armed guards is one way to go, a gentleman left. Arming teachers is not the way to go. None of it, well, a majority of us do not want to be armed. But some preventive medicine, best would be in hiring more counselors. So, if you do plan on spending $8 million somewhere else, new counselors would be the way to go. We have two counselors at our school at Ensign for twelve hundred students, and one psychologist, and that psychologist mostly deals with special education. So, that's, we need more counselors, it's just not enough. And we need more, more communication between administrators and teachers during, and during any kind of, any kind of event, that sometimes things happen and the follow-up is not there for teachers to know who, who's involved, what do we need to look for, what are we doing for this student? So, we've had incidents already at Newport High, at, I mean Newport Heights, at Harbor High, at College Park. So, I would love it if we spent more time and really focused on this situation at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And our last speaker is Britt Doughty.
Good evening, President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, members of the cabinet and the public, I'm Britt Doughty, I'm president of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers. And I've been an employee in this district for about twelve years at this point, and I've always been known to be kind of an even-kill guy who tries to work along with other folks and try to solve problems and get things done in some ways. And within our union, I've kind of advocated with people in different ways behind the scenes to try to get things done, and, and try to work along to get things accomplished and try to help people stay positive. I try to generally, try to give positive comments whenever possible at board meetings. And I'm at a point now, and our members are at a point now, and our leadership is at a point now, where we can't hold our tongues anymore. We can't be those keep-your-chin-up-all-the-time kind of folks, for exactly the kinds of reasons that Mrs. Gibbons just explained. We've had eight different schools since January have some form of an incident happen between a parent or a student making some kind of a threat to an individual teacher, a specific teacher, that we've been dealing with on a regular basis. And there's times that it's been dealt with very well, and times that it's not been dealt with well. There are gaps in communication that happen that promote fear as opposed to taking away fear. And we've got some inconsistencies that we definitely have to reflect upon. I think the most egregious of those schools, it occurred about a week and a half ago. So, on the 27th, we had a school board meeting with our third consecutive presentation on school safety. Less than twelve hours later, College Park had zero electricity for the school day. My understanding is the district was notified in the early morning hours, in the middle of the night, that there would not be power until about 3:00 PM. So, that means that school was held at a school that had no safety equipment for fires, no smoke alarms, no fire detectors, no working telephones to contact anything about an emergency problem, no working public address systems if there was an intruder or a medical emergency. There was no operational heat, classrooms were between fifty-four and sixty degrees the entire instructional period. Email systems weren't working either, so you couldn't get district-wide email, and you had to rely upon if you happened to have your cellphone, although you didn't have that prior notification, you know, to make sure to prepare for no electricity that day. So, we've got some gaps, some pretty serious gaps. And our members are livid. We see that that operation of a school day is a violation of our contract, we see it as a potential violation of educational codes, building codes, and a Williams Act settlement. And MFT is willing to support students, support their safety, and support our employees' safety, and we will take all actions as appropriate to do so.
Thank you. Okay, so, we have Superintendent, Dr. Navarro.
I'm going to follow along on the safety thing. Let you know that last time we came and had a presentation about safety, and we were going to follow, and we have followed up with what our next steps are. Well, one of the things that we're going to be doing is reviewing all of our campuses, walking the campuses with the principals, most likely someone from facilities, walking with the principals. We're, one summer away from having all of our elementary schools have one entry point. Excuse me. And you know, we started that project back during Sandy Hook, and it took us a while to get going, but we're finally going to have all of our elementary schools done. We have four secondary schools we have to work on next. Excuse me.
You got water?
Yeah, I got water, but I'm okay. The one thing I do want to go over is, is, the assumption is that, you know, we didn't have any procedures over at College Park. I happen to have their safety plan in my hand here that talks about what happens in the event of loss of failure of utilities, okay? And this comes out of page seventeen, page thirty, page ten, and page fifty-two. So, what's the principal supposed to do? So, as soon, as soon as there's some kind of loss of utility or any kind of emergency, about fifteen emergencies left listed here, among them are flooding and so on. And the first thing the principal has to do is determine what is the level of the emergencies, is it a level one, level two, level three? In this case, it became a level one, because Edison had communicated with Mr. Marsh's department that they thought this was going to be a temporary failure, okay? And so, in, in doing so, he, the principal, decided that this was going to be a level one emergency. And what do you do with a level one emergency? Well, he did the right thing. He worked with our maintenance and operations, they went over there. There was a mistake, I believe, one of our employees thought that, you know, we were just going to have no school. We didn't do that. I think sometimes we, in our efforts to make things right or to do, we oversimplify the solutions. In this case, we would have had to have notified all the parents to come and get their students. And we would not have been able to release staff until all the students were picked up, because we are responsible for the safety of those students. We would have had to call back, if it's a school with busing, we'd have to call back the buses. Well, we can't really release the students at the bus stops unless the parents are there also. So, it becomes very complicated, and what's in the best interest of students? And so, in this situation, this principal followed this procedure and, and developed the appropriate responses. In this case, we, it was decided to keep, keep the school open. I mean, if you're going to have to stay there anyways, because by the time you get the message out, you might as well go on and do as much as you can instructionally. I know, I understand that we have two leaders on that campus, one is the school principal, the other one is preschool program. The preschool program did have to shut down because of licensing laws, okay? Licensing laws have a certain temperature you have to have, and then you have to close it down. So, they weren't able to close the morning session now, but they were able to close the, the afternoon session. Mr. Marsh, still here? What time did the power go back on at College Park?
When I received notice, it was a little bit afternoon.
Okay. So, the, by the time we had the power on, really didn't even have to shut off, close the preschool. So, there are a set of guidelines, they're all in our emergency procedures, we know that our administrators are trained in knowing what those are. And one of the things that I think is, is important is, we talked about this, this is not a, an exact formula, it's not an algorithm that you just pull out and, and you, and you put in your Xs and Os. You have to really understand the whole situation, the entire context, and make a decision through the support of, of district staff. And perhaps later, maybe Mr. Lee Sung during his report, will talk to you a little bit more about the great effort he has led this year on school safety. While I was out on, on my leave, Mr. Lee Sung took it upon himself with the rest of the administrative staff to focus on school safety this year, which has been, really been paid a huge, paying huge dividends for us in many ways. But we do have procedures in place. Now, if we want to have a conversation about should we change those procedures, we're open to that. But we do have procedures in place, we did follow them, and our staff reacted according to what the policy outlined, and the, and the emergency preparation plan is outlined. So, these are on our, on all of our emergency plans. I ask Mrs. Galey to show me where they all are, and sure enough, they're all on those, every school has those, those plans.
On their, on their individual sites.
Yes.
So, if, I, I would like just a little internal type of, I hate, investigation, but to find, you know, when, when we were called, when we, when the principal knew just, just how the process all went and maybe how we could improve it, like if Mr. Marsh was notified at five in the morning, he could have instigated a call-out. So, parents would know, maybe the call-out would say, there, we may be at a loss of power till two o'clock, make sure your kids bring a sweater, you know, just that kind of thing, just simple, common sense kind of things. And maybe there was no time for that, I don't, I don't know, I don't necessarily want to go into it right now, but to find out exactly kind of what happened, could we refine it? Could we make it better? Or is there no way to make this, this particular incident? Or is there no way to make this particular incident?
Yeah, and like I said, we don't have a problem doing a debrief and reviewing it.
Yeah, a debrief, that's what I want. I like a debrief.
We don't have a problem with that at all. We don't have a problem with sitting down with the various school sites and seeing how they may want to amend their.
Exactly.
But there are certain issues that we, you know, we have to research, you know, and so on.
And I agree. I know as a parent, I would rather my child went to school with their sweater on than didn't go to school. Because, especially if I worked and didn't have childcare and, you know, and I was on my way to drop my kid off and go to work, it would be really difficult. Or it already dropped my child off and I would have to come pick them up. It sounds like a nightmare. So, but I do also understand that those were difficult conditions for the kids, for the teachers, for the staff, when it's cold and.
Absolutely. No one's ignoring that.
Exactly. No, I know that.
I think we support what our principals' decisions were at that time.
Sure. Sure. I would just like, oh, we have some comments here. Ms. Matoye.
And I know from past experience, if the principal couldn't, if for some reason that power outage went to the main district office, that would have affected the kitchen. They wouldn't have gotten food. Totally different responses. If we lived in Chicago and it was going to be 14, totally different responses. And what with our principals all being human beings and working with their staff on how to solve the problems, you know, it sometimes isn't ideal. And I'm not saying that teaching in a cold classroom is any more educationally sound than teaching in a too-hot classroom, just to make you understand that. But each case is different. And I'd like to think that we all work to the best of our situational handling of it.
Mrs. Snell, if I may.
Oh, there you go.
I do want to clarify one fact.
Okay.
Comment first and then clarifying a fact. First of all, I want to assure the board, we do debrief after every situation. That's an important process to learn and always improve our systems. But the conversation that I was involved in early in the morning with Dr. Sur, who was in communication with the principal. At the time that we received notification, we did not know when the electricity was going to be turned on. It could have been, because this was a larger power outage affecting several communities initially.
Oh.
Edison was able to restore electricity to most of those communities, but for whatever reason, I don't know, the College Park community, the electricity could not be restored right away. That was going to take some time. We didn't know whether that meant 30 minutes, an hour, three hours, or the full day. So something that Britt had mentioned, we did not have that information early in the morning. We got information around 10:00 AM, somewhere approximately there, that they were going to have power restored by 1:00. Okay? So at that point, to close school really was not an option. As Mr. Marsh reported, the electricity did come on shortly afternoon. So therefore, you know, the information that we have, if we would have known electricity would have been out the whole day, our decision-making process and our considerations would have been different. It is still very difficult, very difficult to close school in the middle of the day with no notice to parents. We take that responsibility very seriously. Listening to Mr. Rodriguez as the principal to make that decision, even in hindsight, to make that decision, you know, would have been very difficult because he knows the pressure that that puts on parents to come and pick up the kids. And many parents did know what had occurred based on his communications. Some of them who had the means came to pick up their children. That's perfectly fine. But at least they had the option. And I do want to commend the staff. I do want to commend Mr. Rodriguez for working that day and working together as a team and making that happen. And as we heard, the power was restored and they were able to continue their day. So I do commend all of them working together as a team under those circumstances.
Thank you. That provides the explanation I was looking for. And I think that's all we want. We want to know what happened. And before, you know, we, when these things happen, it's important that everybody knows exactly what happened. So thank you. I appreciate that. Mrs. Flore.
Yeah. A couple of things. One is, was the school without communication? Did any, did the principal have the ability to make, be in constant contact with individuals, police, the district office, anybody? Was there any, did they have, be able to have communication? So I just want to have that be clarified.
Well, nowadays, cell phones, you know, pretty much, we're in constant cellphone communication. And I would imagine not only the administration, but almost every staff member would have access to cellphone. They also have emergency radios if needed. But again, nowadays, it's cellphone communication, which is immediate and person-to-person.
Okay. So I want to make sure that we were clear that the school's safety in terms of being able to get a hold of fire, police, it's a 911 on a cellphone, so that they were in communication with that. The second thing is, parents had the ability to call because I think Dr. Rodriguez gives out his cellphone. So there was abilities to call the district office. How could parents get a hold and come and get the kids out of school?
What I can share with you is that there was communication that went out via Blackboard, our district-wide system for communicating with all parents. So he did send out a notification and updates along the way to let them know what it is that was transpiring.
Okay. And so those parents who were on their phone or on their cellphone, they were able to, or their computer or whatever, they were able to access that information too, correct?
Yes.
So while I appreciate what Dr. Doughty is saying, I think that we hire extremely qualified individuals at each of our school sites. And they made judgment calls. And they took a look. They know their community. They know that that's a working-class community where there's some issues. There's also, do we have a large special ed population at that school? So again, having to take care of that is incumbent because many of those are riding buses and so transporting. So I think I commend the entire staff at that school, teachers and everyone for ensuring the safety of the students and also not putting an unnecessary burden on. And as you said, you didn't receive, we didn't know how long it was. Now, I do have a question about fire alarms because aren't fire alarms on a separate system? Can you just pull?
Do they work if there's no power?
They'll work for a little while with battery backup.
Okay.
They are connected before the main breaker for the school. So if the main breaker for the school trips, you still have fire alarm. But if Edison Power is out for the whole area, that doesn't have power.
But there is a fire, there is a battery. So each one of those, if they had had a fire, they could have pulled it and the battery would have gone out and we would have heard it, correct? And then they would have taken it. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Flore, before you, Dr. Sur talked about our Blackboard program.
Yes.
Okay, it's a redundant program. So Mrs. Franco has told us that it will call the cellphone. It will send an email. It will send a text all at once. And it will send a voicemail.
It's good to know. And both English and Spanish, correct?
If it's, if they've, if it's in students, if it's in student information system that they want in Spanish, yes.
And I guess the final question is, every student has to fill out an emergency card, correct? So if the parent is not available, you have to go down the list. And I believe there's 10 people on those cards, correct? And so there could have been a chance that if we had said, "We're closing school," and we had kids there, we might have been there till 6:00 at night because we couldn't get a hold of anybody. Because we can't release them.
Right. If we were to get word out that we were closing school for whatever reason, obviously, our staff would stay as long as necessary to, until all children are picked up.
Great. Thank you very much.
I guess that's a good reason to keep those emergency cards on paper.
I do want to let you know that the team has also decided to ask all the principals to send messages out to the families to make sure we have their most current phone numbers. Most importantly, their cell numbers. And that those are kept up to date because that is our best way to communicate.
Absolutely. Okay. Any other comments? No. Okay, we're moving on to the consent calendar.
Okay. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one in one motion. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes on the motion unless members of the board, staff, or public requested specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar. Pooled items will be removed to the discussion action item. And I happen to have one. Sorry. It is the Contract Regarding Challenge Success to Provide Professional Development for Newport Harbor High School. And I know that Dr. DiAgostino is here, and I think this is a really important item to talk about exactly what student, you know, challenge success is.
16D5.
It's 16D5.
Okay.
So I'd like to have it moved to discussion.
Move approval with the exception of 16D is in D5.
Yes, correct.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So the consent calendar passes. Now we move to discussion action calendar.
Madam President, I have a request. A request that we go ahead and talk about 16D5 before we go into the business part of the meeting, since Dr. DiAgostino's here. Dr. Jokum, is there anything you want to add before, as Dr. DiAgostino is making his way up?
I'll let him get started and I'll jump in.
Okay.
You will loom. You will loom.
I know. I know you love me, right?
Good evening.
I'll give you a box of cookies.
My pleasure. My pleasure to discuss what I think is a very positive and strong program for the district. As you know, we have been working closely with all of our schools in the wake of the Parkland shooting, in the wake of all kinds of goings-on that lead to student trauma. And one of the things that you will be approving tonight under consent is the Challenge Success Program. This is a resiliency program, research-based program that works with staff, works with parents, and works with students to create a better balance in the lives of students at high-powered school communities. And because we believe that all 32 schools in the district are high-powered, this is a district-wide initiative. We're starting at the high school level with Corona Del Mar. Margaret Dunlap, who is one of the key personnel with Challenge Success, met with the staff at Corona Del Mar on Monday last in the morning. They had a staff meeting. They will be at Newport Harbor High School on March 26th. And then they will be at Estancia and Costa Mesa in the month of late April and, in the months of late April and early May. Our goal, we already have an appointment on the calendar. Dr. Jokum and I are going to be meeting with Kathy Scott later on this week and her administrative team. The focus is where do we go from here? We will be talking about a parent piece and a student piece. And so the goal would be to have a student survey done, which is independent and a part, independent and mutually exclusive to the California Healthy Kids Survey. This survey focuses on stressors like homework, stressors of inability to sleep, stressors of student workload, number of AP classes, and get some data from the student population that then gets shared with parents and students and student leadership about how the culture can be transformed. And so then there's research-based practices that are employed by a core team, a leadership team, if you will, that is trained by Challenge Success to look at things like homework, number of AP classes that students take, et cetera. One of the things that is key is block schedule. It's believed that a block schedule is less stressful than a traditional six-period day. So as someone who was involved in the development of block schedules at three of our four comprehensive high schools, I'm really proud of that, that we had that vision to do that. There's other, like extending the passing period, starting the school day a little bit later. These are all things that can de-stress what might be a high-powered culture at a particular school community. So we're excited to have this. This is the starting point of all of this. You'll be approving the faculty meetings that are occurring and any work that we do for the remainder of this fiscal year. And then we'll come with a budget item for Mr. Holcomb and Mr. Trader. Are you going to revise second interim right now before we? We will come back with a budget for them and for you, obviously, to approve that will take us down that road and build those resilient communities.
Well, and the reason I ask you this because we had, a couple of us had a pleasure of meeting with Margaret just for five, 10 minutes. And it was very clear that their intent is to help us as their website. And I encourage everyone to go on their website. It's www.challengeSuccess.org. They are based at Stanford University in the Department of Education. It's a not-for-profit, and they are moving, they are moving across the United States. But there are, there's a lot of resources on this website for parents, for kids. But I think one of the things that struck both Mrs. Yelsey and I yesterday was, what's the acronym? AADP, that they strongly believe that high school students should have nine hours, nine hours of sleep a night, and that they need at least an hour of downtime.
So there's downtime, there's family time, and then there's activity time. And all of those things are critical to developing a well-balanced, stress-resilient student.
And so it's fascinating how they're talking about all of that and then, you know, coupling that with, so how many, how many AP classes are you taking? Oh, four? And what's the homework load on those? And if you have downtime, and they are very insistent about family time, you should have time with your family, no programming. And so it was quite, it's quite fascinating how they were going to be working on this. But again, they are, they are starting the process. We are going to move slowly. But I think that this is something that we, this district can model it for California as well as taking a look at all those stressors and develop strategies for healthy, engaged kids and strong schools.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Yelsey.
Yeah, I agree with Mrs. Flore and also the fact that this is not a one-time program or one-year program. This is a multi-year program. And after we met with Mrs. Dunlap, I stopped by the high school and I talked to just a few people who were in the meeting with her in the morning. And they were blown away.
Okay.
And I asked how the faculty, how did they receive it? And she said, "You could hear a pin drop in that room." And their only complaint was only 40 minutes, and they were hoping they could have more time with her.
And we're going to arrange that. Yeah, immediately after the presentation, Kathy Scott, the principal, grabbed me with her one good wing and said, "You need to have them out here right away. We don't want to lose this momentum." And so we're going to do that. We're going to follow up on it. And we'll keep you updated on the progress.
Okay. Thank you.
So with that, I move approval.
Can I have another discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Ms. Matoye.
See what happens when I wait? That's why I blur it out.
I'll second it, so we're still in discussion.
Oh, good. Thanks. This is just, this is just one more tool in the toolbox. I think to help our teachers understand our safety too. We understand our environmental comfort that can extend into being unsafe, but our environmental comfort. But then there's our confidence that we will be safe in school as a parent, as a student, and as a teacher. And we are working really hard on this piece, as well as other pieces, to address that ethereal part of the child that you don't test for and you don't do a checklist for. That good teachers have to be able to know how to read the kids and figure it out. And I commend us for moving that quickly to help fix this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. You know, the superintendent last week sent out an article on research that shows that positive school culture is the foundation for school safety. Our deputy superintendent talked to the Italian Principal Corps and said, "It's not about hardening schools. It's actually about softening schools." And so the message is unified at the level of your district leadership and your site principals are aware of it as well. Positive school culture is going to be our driving force. This does not mean that we don't take. This does not mean that we don't take other elements of school safety very seriously and that we're open to conversations around that, but positive school culture is knowing kids, building relationships, that's what this is about. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I'd like to share too that.
Sure, I was going to say, any other comments? And then I, yeah, okay.
At the student advisory, I asked the question, and we have two student representatives from all of our secondary schools, with the exception of junior high school. And I said, do you feel safe in your school? And every one of them rose their hand. Ben was there, he saw. And yes, and so that, you know, although I was a little nervous, it was so close, you know, to the shooting, that maybe hesitant about it, but they all, you know, rose their hands, so they feel safe. And the main reason is because they work, they feel they're part of a team. You know, one of the gals, I said, why do you feel safe? And she said, because we all have each other's back. We're there to roll up our sleeves and help each other and, you know, and the ones that get away, you know, that, that feel alienated or not involved, those are the ones we really have to work at. But for the overall thing, she said, we're all there for each other. We feel, you know, like our school, you know, she said. So I really think, you know, we have to, you know, instead of splitting the hair and splitting the hair and trying to figure out, you know, what policy, who reads the policy? And by the way, if, we have two armed guards or 10 armed guards. That guy took down, you know, in the first 10 seconds, you know, it killed 10 students, you know? And so, you know, you just, you know, you really got to work in the, you know, the common sense of it and empower them, you know, and that's what the students are asking for. Anyways, thank you for.
Okay. Any other comments before we, we've got a motion, a second, and we're ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, moving on to discussion action, 17A. Mr. Holcomb?
Boy, there's something in the air tonight. I don't know what it is. Very drying in here or something.
It's probably raining outside, so it's extra dry inside.
So this, this, this resolution is a resolution that we do each year. The reason why we do this resolution is to allow us to select vendors under the E-Rate program that provide the best value to the district. Because technology is all very different, the different components of each solution that's offered by a different provider are different. This allows us to weight those and make an evaluation of what's in the best value to the district. But in order to do so, according to California law, we must have this resolution resolved by you.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Roll call.
Ms. Snell? Yes. Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
Ms. Flore?
Yes.
Mr. Davenport?
Yes.
Ms. Franco Zapsit? Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Okay. So moving on to 17B, the exciting part of the evening.
Oh, boy.
Boy, money. Looking forward to this all month, all quarter.
I actually like it because it makes me feel good.
Well, President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, guests, it's so good to be here with you tonight. And I can make this presentation available to you, Mrs. Snell too, if you like.
Move approval.
So let's talk about the second interim. And first of all, it's, let's talk about what it is. So if you think about it, second interim and what it is, and once upon a time, if you want to get in the Wayback Machine with me, there was a school district, and it's a Richmond school district in Northern California. And unfortunately, they were terribly mismanaged. And as a result of that mismanagement, they needed a bailout. And so they came to the state and they said, we need a bailout. And so the state put together a bailout to be very helpful. And then the governor, the governor at the time was Governor Pete Wilson, and at that time, he said, whoa, wait a minute. Whoa, what are we doing here? Stop the train. And, and wasn't because he didn't want to help education or help move things along, but he had a fear that we were creating a, a.
Escape route.
Thank you.
Very well versed.
A moral hazard, a moral hazard. And, and that this would kind of continue on without some sort of legislation to make sure that this would never happen again in, in any school district. And so in 1991, they came up with AB 1200. And as a result of that, we now do a few things. It's required by law, and it includes budget adjustment revisions between the first and second interim. And in that, we account for all financial activity between July 1st, 2017 through Octo, or January 31st, 2018. And in that, we also include a multi-year forecast, which includes the most latest and greatest forecasts that are out there, including the governor's budget that he released in January. So with that then, let's talk about the governor's budget, and he has released a very cautionary budget. And if you think about all the things the governor could talk, talk to us about, all the things he could have said, he chose to say a few things. And he chose to say, hey, in 2011, we faced a tough, rough time. We had a $27 billion deficit. And, and then he says, look, I've warned you that there is a recession lurking in the future. And he says fiscal restraints are needed more than ever as California approaches the peak of its business cycle. Our number one job is fixing our state budget and keeping spending in line with revenue. So a very cautious budget he is submitting. But in that budget, there's some really good news for education. First of all, he is repaying, or I'm sorry, he's, he's fully funding the LCFF formula, the Local Control Funding Formula, two years in advance of what they thought they were going to be able to do it in. And that's really great news. He's also putting in some new transparency kinds of things. And so, you know, the LCAP, that 300-page LCAP plan that you see, there's going to be more of that.
Oh, boy.
Good times.
Vanessa will be thrilled.
Yes.
Child security.
There's going to be a little bit more transparency to make sure that we can do that in a way that, that is helpful to our stakeholders. And so there's going to be some new, new things there. There's also $1.8 billion of one-time money in that. For that, for us, that's about almost $6 million.
Ooh.
Which is good. And then in career technical education, there's about $200 million for that. And special education has a little bit smaller amount, about 10 million for some things to do with students and planning and that regard. So overall, it's a great budget for us, or actually, it's a great budget for education. We won't see hardly any of that, except for maybe the almost $6 million, we hope, that doesn't change between now and, and May. So let's talk about the proposed budget revisions we'd like to have you pass tonight. And in general, just, just keep in mind, this is really what's happening here. The numbers are behaving according to the assumptions that you set in June. And that's good news. There's, there's no issue there. So let's talk about revenue and what's happening with revenue. So overall, unrestricted revenue increased by $970,000, which is great news. And, and the bulk of that is Medi-Cal and E-Rate. And let me tell you why. Medi-Cal has become very erratic, and it's impossible for us to forecast what we're going to get from that, even though we submit invoices. However, the state goes back and they, they audit and they change the rules. And so we never count on that until we actually see the money show up in the bank. And so that's why you're seeing an increase there in that revenue. And the same is with E-Rate. E-Rate is also another thing that's a little hard to predict, and so we don't count on that until we actually see that revenue show up. And then restricted revenue increased by $585,000. And a small portion of that is related to some adjustments for federal programs, but the bulk of that is from community support. We have a very generous community, and they support the schools all year long. And so that's, that's wonderful news. Expense is also tracking with assumptions. For the most part, unrestricted expense increased by about $140,000, and most of that was in staffing. And non-staffing was lower by $233,000. That's kind of a normal trend for us because as we get, how you say, community support through the year, as we, as our principals transfer money between accounts, that's kind of the trend that we see. And so that's to be expected. Our restricted expense went up by about $856,000. Staffing is lower by $327,000, and non-staffing is higher by $1.1 million. Now, you might say that's a little bit large. However, most of that is in services, which we planned for. And then also, we did have a small correction for sub-agreements in special ed. We had more participation in these services than we had anticipated in June. And that was about $350,000 of that number there. So moving on, other than, we had, for special ed, we, we make a contribution from the unrestricted fund to support special ed. And because those sub-agreements that I just talked about, there, that's going to show up here in an other financing uses correction. And so we had support for our restricted programs, went up for special education and summer programs. However, our ending fund balance is improving. And so our unrestricted ending fund balance increased by about $559,000, and the restricted funding balance remained unchanged. And so with that then, let's look at the multi-year outlook. And we just have to remember, and keep this in mind, that periods of, of high economic growth often sow the seeds of their own demise.
Yes.
And so we want to be a little cautious in looking at the out year. And so when we look at the out year, we, we see, we see our revenue here. And, and this revenue line is, is, we're predicting it's going to go down. Now, we have not put in almost $6 million yet of the one-time money. We're going to wait until May until we, we're pretty sure that that's going to happen. But assuming that that doesn't happen, this is what would happen to our revenue. And then we expect it's going to go up in the, in the out year. And, and then here's the problem. This is our, this is our expense line. And so expenses are exceeding our revenue. And that's not sustainable, not sustainable at all. However, this is planned, we're doing this intentionally, we know we're doing it, and candidly, we're, we're stretching to meet the priorities and the expectations that you and Dr. Navarro have set. And, and so with multiple curriculum adoptions, air conditioning, that's a stretch. And so you just need to know, we are stretching to make that happen, and you're seeing that in your, in your fiscal numbers. Another concern we have is pensions. Pension rates are continuing to go up for the employer, and that would be us. And, you know, assuming that the economy continues to do well, that, you know, maybe this won't be a problem, but if the economy doesn't go well and the pensions are in this kind of shape already, they're not really in any kind of shape to take on a recession. And so that's a little troubling. We could see those rates go up dramatically, even more than what, what we're seeing now.
Is that 23.5% for Calpers?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
And so we have some, in addition to that, we have some property tax variability here. It's actually a little volatile. Since the, the beginning of the Great Recession, we have experienced some property tax volatility.
Yes, we have.
And so, you know, the 10-year average change increase is 4.26% for us. And next year's budget forecast, we're, we're predicting 4.11%. That's slightly lower than our 10-year average. However, there's this little known unknown out there with the federal tax changes. And some economists, specifically from Chapman University, are predicting that that's going to have a negative impact on our home values.
Of course.
So we're concerned about that. And that also gives us another pause to be cautious in, in the out years. So, but the good news is you have a responsible ending fund balance, which includes a reserve. And that reserve meets the lawful requirement. It also includes a stabilization reserve that can absorb any kind of foreseeable shock or any kind of priority that you deem that you have to, to complete. And so with that, you know, I, I, I hope you feel confident in that regard, that you have the financial wherewithal to be able to do what you need to do and to weather any kind of shock that might happen. Now, we are predicting our, our, our reserve will go down slightly, and then it's going to even out here in the out years.
That was the double adoption issue too, wasn't it?
Yeah, 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 exactly. Now, this does not include Dr. DiAgostino's budget revision.
Oh.
Hopefully. Anyways, I'm sorry. So in.
But it includes the air conditioning though.
Yes, it does. It does include air conditioning and your curriculum adoptions.
Oh, good.
And the fencing.
So, and then with that then, we recommend a positive certification.
Yay.
And it's been so good to be here with you tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Does anybody have any questions?
Oh, where's the saying? I know. Where's the saying? Where's our fish? Where's the goldfish?
We are solving and moving forward.
I'm sorry, we are solving, moving forward. We need to get that on there.
The ghost can't, the ghost is still here.
I would like to offer one other just observation for you, which is, you know, nobody can predict the future, right? And, and we're seeing that in what Mr. Trader's presenting. But the, the board could be very happy that in the last year, we refinanced all of the district's long-term outstanding debt. And while we didn't assume an aggressive property value escalation rate, it was very reasonable, doing so in today's environment with the changes that have happened would be different. And we might have gotten different rates and those types of things. So from my perspective, I'm just very glad that all the work we did here last year and the trust that you allowed us to do that in my very first year here and Mr. Trader's in this position, we're very grateful for.
Well done, well done.
Approve the second interim report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we save the taxpayers money too. Lots of money. Yeah, that was, that was great. Okay, moving on to board member reports, and I'm going to start with Martha.
Oh, okay. Couple of things. One is, had the pleasure to join, this is Matoye, and took my granddaughter to see Bring It On at Costa Mesa High School, and it was fabulous. The, the collaboration between the various departments, and not only drama, but the cheer, the kids in cheer, the, the drum line, and the dance kids.
And the jazz band.
It was just fabulous. It was just, it was wonderful, and I know that they're submitting it for a MACI award, so we're hoping that that will do, do really well. Also, we'll be attending on the 20th, I will be missing the mentor luncheon, but I am going up with the Coastline ROP up to Sacramento to lobby on behalf of some stable, secure funding for career and technical education. We will be meeting with, and some big champions of it. Rocky Chavez is one, Patrick O'Donnell is another. I mean, these individuals, several of them are former board members, school board members, and so they see the value in career and technical education, so that's exciting. And finally, a couple of things. One, I had the opportunity to talk with Mr. Brazenly over at Mariners Elementary School, and he shared an article in which Sean Bolton is, and it was written by a principal at Fountain Valley High School, which mirrors very much the ideas being challenged with challenge success. And, you know, I think every principal does this, did you go this? It's that sending that, pushing that button and sending out an e-blast to 1,000 families. It's kind of nerve-wracking. He said it was, you know, it's kind of nerve-wracking. He said it was, you know, it's kind of nerve-wracking. Um, but he's got, received nothing but very, very high remarks on that. I mean, he had over forty people attend a, a parent, uh, meeting for, uh, math. And they went over a couple of things, but he had a very courageous parent stand up and say, talk about, we gotta stop having these tutors. We gotta stop sending our kids to tutors because we have to do, be one-up on the next person because, you know, that's the only way you can do it. And he was very, very proud of that. Um, and again, I just appreciate everything. I'm looking forward to the, the opening of the Learning Center tomorrow. Um, I think that's gonna be fabulous. And I guess my question is, is that going to be the prototype? Is this the prototype or the standard? I wanna put this really nicely. Is this the standard that we all are going to aspire, that all of our, uh, secondary schools have?
Well, uh, the answer is, uh, not yet. And, um, the reason is because this, this particular project was one that, uh, was grassroots project from the school.
School.
Uh, and from its community of parents and students. Uh, they have looked at what's happened in other schools and, uh, and what's been happening generally overall with the, uh, say, for example, the number of volumes that are maintained in a school library and those sorts of things. And they came up with what we often call, uh, an educational specification. They didn't come up with a formal one per se. They came up with a set of, uh, of objectives and requirements, uh, what this space would do, what it might look like, uh, and said, this is what we would like to see our library, uh, be like in the future. And the foundation, uh, supported those groups of folks. This, the, the, the Corona Del Mar School Foundation supported them, uh, to the tune of over a million dollars, uh, a significant amount of money, believing that this would help students, uh, to be able to have a better place, uh, and more useful place than their existing school library. So, with the, the backing of the parents, uh, we looked into it and said, you know, there is, uh, example for this at other schools, uh, and there's some, some thinking that has been adopted in other places. Uh, so, um, everybody's on board at the school for this. Uh, we think this is a good opportunity for the district to, uh, to look at going forward with this particular project as a, um, sort of a prototype, uh, project or pilot, sometimes we call, yes, yes, Mrs. Metoye, uh, as, at-
Make sure it works.
Where we can, um, study it and determine how it works. Uh, we've had some conversations, uh, I've had some conversations with, uh, Mr. Lee Sung and the people in his staff about, uh, how this now needs to lead to us, uh, doing a continuous evaluation of, you know, how is this working? Is the number of volumes that we originally looked at the right number of volumes, uh, to maintain of books? Uh, the different types of spaces that have been created in here? How are they working? Are those the right kinds of spaces on a going-forward basis? So, it really, uh, before it becomes a standard, in my view, before it becomes a standard for all of the rest of our schools, uh, it's something that we need to study. And we re- need to really, from an educational perspective and delivery of curriculum and in supporting students, need to evaluate it. And then, each one of the other schools, once we've done that and we've tweaked, potentially the district has tweaked the, the, uh, the use of the space, uh, in the future, then to talk with each one of the, the rest of the schools about, okay, what type of standard do we want to have for a learning resource center or a library at each one of our high schools on a going-forward basis? All of that said, uh, I will say that the, uh, the extreme enthusiasm amongst, uh, our other schools about this project has them all saying, uh, when can I-
I want one too.
Yes.
Me too.
When can I, and, uh, how do we pay for this? Uh, and of course, that's a significant issue, is how we would pay for that, uh, at the other schools. And of course, uh, the other schools, uh, haven't, uh, specifically defined the, uh, ideas for how it will work. So, there's only so many square feet at each one of our schools and existing libraries. So, say, for example, if you decided to keep all of the volumes and all of the extra spaces and to make it fit inside of our existing footprint at our existing campuses, that obviously wouldn't work. So, there, there's a lot, uh, to think through and going forward. But it's a very, very exciting project. Uh, I think it's going to be, uh, looking at what the future of our library spaces will look like in our schools going forward. And we're really, really grateful to the foundation, uh, to the ASB. Actually, the students, uh, have infunds that are appropriate to them, uh, donated for some of their own equipment, uh, for their space. That's things that are appropriate for them and would not be funded by the school. Uh, the, uh, PTA has gotten involved in backing this project. So, it's really wonderful to see the amount of support, uh, that's behind this particular project.
And finally, I have a couple of, a last two items. One is, I had the pleasure of, uh, was invited to present on school governance to CSCA, Chapter eighteen, and it was fabulous. And thank you very much. Lot of good questions, um, was able to address those and keep them educated, uh, and let them know about school governance and what, what that means and how, how the board operates. And finally, Dr. Navarro, um, I mentioned last, last time about, uh, we were, there were, you know, you were walking, you walk, we're walking the schools to assess the safety. And I'm particularly interested because I'm concerned about making sure that our public starts to know that we are looking seriously at our high schools. And so, I would hope that in the near future, that we can start a conversation, um, and start engaging some key stakeholders at our various high schools, um, maybe invite them even on a walk-around, um, so that they can, so they can see the concerns that we have about our open campuses, um, at the high school. I appreciated Kathy Scott, my, my granddaughter goes there, and I appreciated Kathy Scott calling, um, the parents last week and saying, oh, by the way, we are now really instituting, we are going to be absolutely closing and locking all, all access. You will have to, if you're tardy, you will have to walk in either at the, at the middle school or at the high school level. There will not be any, barring the fact that we have some places that you can't do that.
That sounds familiar. I've heard that before.
At the athletic, on the athletic. But again, I think it's imperative that we start bringing our key community, you know, our key stakeholders to walk the campus and see our concerns and have them participate in that. So, um, I hope that you will reach out to all the principals at those, at the, at our four high, well, our six high schools and, and start working on that and getting them involved.
Thank you. Mr. Davenport.
I'll report.
Mrs. Black.
I'm gonna, um, it, it was my pleasure to be at D-LAC, and, um, Mrs. Franco joined me as well. And, um, there's a little over thirty-five parents there, and they went through kindergarten readiness and, uh, the points. And I don't know what the program name is, and, um, but they, all the parents get it and they do kind of a global study, not individual student study, but they get a global study of the school and the district and where we're at, you know, for preschool and, and through preschool and for the, uh, kindergarten. So, I was assessing my now-kindergartner grandson, and, uh, and he's ready. He's ready for first grade, as far as I'm concerned.
There you go.
Anyway, but the parents, it was very, um, positively, you know, received by everyone, very positive, um, uh, feedback from the parents. And, um, but the other thing was, is Dr. Sur and, um, Barmeister and Mr., um, I always wanna call him Jake, so-
Jake.
Mr. Haley and, um-
Doctor, doctor. He's a new doctor.
I don't, I can't keep track. And hopefully, you're not offended. It's not intentional. And, um, Dr. Shaka, no. Is he a doctor also?
I have no idea.
But they were there.
Okay.
And, um, and they talked about, um, if you had, um, an issue, you know, particularly in the classroom with, you know, between your parent and a student, um, and a teacher. And, and also with the district, with the principal, what are the protocols? And, and they went through it and they, you know, they talked about, I think it was, hopefully you'll cover it better than I, than I did, 'cause I know them. This is what we do, you know, um, as board members. And, um, and they shared that, that, when they call a board member, we call the superintendent, and the superintendent calls one of them. And then, you know, and then it goes back to the principal, and then the principal has to talk to the teacher. So, they were really encouraging them that, um, that they still can call their board member, because that's what we're here for. We're here to advocate. So, but, they said that a simpler process would be to go back to your teacher, even if you're frustrated or whatnot, and really try, you know, to sit down, listen and share your, you know, concerns. And, um, and then also, if that didn't work, then to go to the principal, you know, and that they said at all times, both, um, you know, Dr. Sur and Dr. Barmeister were always available, their departments, and, um, and, um, I know they left their cards there. Um, and there was, you know, quite a lively, you know, discussion, you know, and, and people, as they will, will not, you know, will wanna talk about their experience.
Sure.
You know, and, um, and so, I think you did an amazing job. And Dr. Sur got up and did it in Spanish.
I know.
Which floored me, 'cause I had no idea. I haven't seen you in action, but you did a great job. They gave him a, you know, round of applause. They were very impressed with that. And, uh-
He's bilingual.
But these parents are really committed, you know, um, and, and we also had our, um, you know, Spanish to English and English to Spanish tables. And so, um, the Corona Del Mar side, you know, we have multiple languages there, fifty-six to be exact.
Mm-huh.
And, um, so those parents are very active, and, um, and they are passing it on to other parents, you know, via email. And so, um, staff had everything, Claire had everything ready, you know, so that they could take it back with them and send them off to the other parents. So, you know, it was really, I thought, very well-received and on-time, pertinent, good job. And, um, and I don't know how long you had to stay afterwards, but I just had a few questions afterwards, but inching my way to the parking lot, they were really great, very respectful. So, it was good. And then, I really, um, over the weekend, I, I watched Harbers. Um, it played, you know, I'm still learning these games, but, um, the girls', um, lacrosse. Pouring rain, forty-five degrees, and lights were on, so hopefully, it was warming them up. And the parents were putting up different cover, you know, in this, in the, um, I mean, because it, it, it was freezing. I mean, I was, I was totally bundled up, soaking wet, and, what, by the time I got back. But, so, you know, kudos to them, and, and so, their Battle of the Bill was in the rain and, you know.
You can play lacrosse in the rain.
What was it?
You can play lacrosse in the rain.
You can play the lacrosse and, uh-
We had swimming tryout.
But they're, you know, they're very determined and, um, I still can't figure out what the score was, but, um, they were having a great time and a lot of support. And, uh, it's just as amazing that, you know, that their dedication, so. And none of them were purple, which is really shocking. They were all, you know, so running around, I guess.
I guess so, yeah.
Kudos to them. They really, you know, did a good job out there.
Okay, Mrs. Yelsey.
Uh, yes, um, obviously, we all know the arts are alive and well here. And I also saw Bring It On, and I was so impressed with not only the number of people that participated, but I was talking to Dr. Haley, and he said that two of the main actors had never acted before. And it was-
I can't believe it.
They were all, it was, it was a really an impressive performance. And then, I also saw, that was Bring It On, then I saw Dream On, which was the Orcus's performance at CDM. That's their dance program. And they only have three seniors this year that are graduating, so they have a very young team. And with a first-year, um, coach, uh, but they did a remarkable job. And it's really, the, the future of those young kids on the team is really bright, 'cause it was spectacular, as it always is, with their many, many, uh, clothing changes throughout the night.
Yeah.
Um, I also went over to Harbor View one day, and I met the principal for a day with Dr. Schmidt, who was dressed with his bowtie on courtesy of Dr. Schmidt. And he, uh, made a really good move first thing in the morning. He brought in donuts for all the staff.
Wow.
Which was well-received. And then, he made an executive decision that there would be no homework that night. So, all the kids in the school really loved him as principal. He, he really took this seriously. He did a good job. He did a good job. Um, and then, um, with Mrs. Snell, I went to T. Winkle's, um, quarter, quarterly?
Trojan Pride, yeah.
Pride Awards, where they give out, um, graduate degrees, doctorates, and for different levels of performance, bachelors. And it was amazing, there are a lot of kids there received awards for good academic performance. So, it was really, it's always nice to see that. And then, challenge success, back to that again, just for a minute. There are a lot of parents who wanna have groups of kids just at their homes to talk. So, you know, open up their homes, just like some church groups do. They have small groups that kids can get together and talk. And so, I mentioned to Margaret Dunlop that this was the case, that parents are craving information about how they can help. And I said, do you have any, anything they can use? And she said, well, there's some fishbowl kinds of questions they can ask. And she said, you know, we could contact her and, and get more, and I'm, I'm sure Dr. DiAgostino will do this. But she said, for example, if groups are together, they could just start it out by saying, I wish my parents knew that, as an open-ended question, and let them talk about that. Or, I wish my teachers knew that. And it would start a conversation that might, you know, give them some information. So, I thought that was really interesting. And then, um, one other thing, because health and wellness is so much a part of also our safety plan of what we're doing. And I know it was mentioned by one of the speakers about the counselors and the number of counselors we have, and I've heard that-
Forever.
Well, and I've heard it now especially because we want all of our counselors to be out there in communication with all the kids to make sure that they're meeting their needs, and they don't have time when they have big caseloads. I know it costs money, but I think it's something that we should just, at some point, have a discussion about.
Study it.
Okay. I'm going.
That's fine. I can do last.
Presidential profit.
Um, well, many of you were with me at this, but, um, the OCSBA and that AC, ATSCA dinner, um, uh, it was, in fact, the speaker at the dinner, we all, many of us saw, was talking about this very thing, about, um, kids having good academics, but also having, um, support and, and, um, strategies for dealing with stress. And, uh, so, it, I think the, it's like, the whole nation, nation is starting to see how much pressure these kids are under. She, um, her name is, uh, Michelle Robinson. She's Associate Director at Vanguard Counseling Department. And her, um, her presentation, I thought, was really interesting. And you actually can go on, um, the, um, OCSBA website, and you can download a copy of the presentation. I thought it was really good. And, and our own, Dr. Navarro made a presentation. I didn't see it, but, I heard it was good. No, it actually addresses something that Van has been talking about, which is, um, um, effective assessment and grading strategies. In other words, yeah, ways, he was talking about ways that administrators and teachers can, um, grade students that are, really reflect more their mastery of the subject. So, um, but I heard from other people that you were really good.
Oh, well, was it only in my mind?
Yeah, I know. Now, I was at another, um, at the same time, they had a presentation on human trafficking. That was very disturbing.
It was very disturbing.
Yeah, and, um, and, uh, I, I think one of the people that's involved with this group from the, um, Wayfinders, presented to-
Yes.
Harbor Council. Harbor Council, I believe, a young woman.
They were at the leadership retreat.
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah. It was just, I, and I had, I happened to be at a Harbor Council, I came in at ten o'clock at the Harbor Council meeting, and she was just finishing up her presentation. It's very disturbing to me and everyone. I just didn't realize what a huge, huge problem this is. So, um, in Orange, yeah, in Orange County, although the gentleman, and we do have a task force in Orange County, and I was told by, we were all told by the person that presented, that Orange County has, is like a model for having all these things in place.
They started it three years ago, and our, our Dr. DiAgostino was part of that.
Oh.
Brought that to one of our first student advisory. We had a presentation, and, uh, they talked about it.
Yeah.
And it was scary.
It was, it's very, it's very scary, because what they're, one of the things they're doing is they're educating police to not, to treat prostitutes, to, to treat them as victims as well, and not just criminals, and not, um, give them the support they need. So, it, it was a disturbing, but very interesting. Um, I feel like volunteering for something for this. It's just so, um, um, and then, I also wanted to give some- And then I also wanted to give some kudos to Dr. Navarro and the the staff and administration for being so proactive for this, the the walkout, the seventeen-minute walkout to support students and safety. And I thought it was just really, really wonderful that you were ahead of all this, all the principals know what to do, parents have gotten information, they know what's going to happen because there were a few misconceptions, like we were just going to let them wander off into the streets. And so I think it's going to be a really meaningful and safe experience for our students to, that want to participate and you don't have to participate and but I think it's going to be a good experience. Let me see, do I have?
Leave some for Shar.
No, that's okay.
Oh, she always has plenty. Okay, no, I think, I think that's it, the, the, I was just going to mention Back Bay, but it's already been mentioned, how much, I know many of us participated, maybe all, in their senior exit interviews. It's such a meaningful process and I really enjoyed participating, so. Kudos to the gal, that Tracy Camaraino, who is so, such a nice person, she reaches out, she thanks you, she makes sure everybody understands what's going on and you can tell that the the kids really care a lot about her because she cares a lot about them. So, great school.
I cannot confirm this.
You can confirm that, okay, good.
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Holcomb for giving the report so quickly after I asked for some information on our H-back plans and status, it was wonderful. And I did attend the Davis presentation, which was probably the last one that you gave, but I, we all laughed because we had double the amount of any other school of people that were there, there were three of us in the audience. So what I liked the most though, when you have, so it's almost like, don't go to these things, community, because then I get to hear of all this information, go to, go, because the information that they told was specific to Davis. And it was, here's your campus, here's where these are going to go, here's how you are going to be affected, here's what we're doing to help you. And they did this at College Park and Wilson and all the, the six schools that are going to be addressed. Anyway, thank you very much for that. And I will talk about youth sports at youth sports time. Costa Mesa Middle School went to the UCI Mesa Awards and it took me a while to realize that Mesa Awards had nothing to do with Costa Mesa High School because I got, it's the Math Engineering and Science Achievement Awards. And they had several students competing and actually had twelve place winners, I mean, many firsts, some seconds, some thirds, and that was great. But what I wanted to commend was their teacher, who wrote in his article to, on Facebook, on a different, this is Mr. Nguyen, teacher at Costa Mesa Middle School, on a different note, I'm also extra proud of those who attended, as I saw our Costa Mesa students helping each other out due to the rain, holding doors open for strangers, picking up after themselves and others and being humble in their victories. Great job modeling the Mesa way at UCI. So that warms my heart. I appreciate the achievements, but that just emphasizes what good kids we have and what great teachers are there to encourage them to be those good kids.
Okay, good. Okay, so now committee reports.
Youth sports. Thank you, I'm on a roll now. I just, we have our youth sports committee meeting one, at the first week of the month and Dr. Baurmeister is there as as Mr. Holcomb this time, Mr. Marsh has attended and Mrs. Snell and Mrs. Franco, but I get to announce. And it's, it's business as usual, we've had a dry year this year, so we're anticipating hearing about the fields that are not getting enough water. Thank you for, Mother Nature, for taking care of some of that problem for us this week. But the topic that is most on people's minds is the March twentieth Battle of the Bell game for baseball between Mesa and Estancia, which is held at Angel Stadium. It's no cost to go, no cost for parking, and our kids get to play in a major league stadium and it's very cool. And you still can get tickets, and I didn't bring the entire emails for both people, but you can go to either the Estancia website or the Mesa website and talk to Clark Chapman from Costa Mesa High School or Dan Huber from Estancia and they have how we donate. And what you do is you buy a voucher for Angel tickets. The vouchers are only twenty dollars each. The agreement is that both schools will, the city will sell this many tickets and then we get to use the stadium. And it's just such a great opportunity for our kids to get to play in a major league stadium. And so if you can support, you can buy tickets, if you go, you go, if you don't go, if you hate baseball, buy the tickets and don't go. But it's, it's, it's just a great way of supporting them and it's a really good committee because people work out problems.
Also, Costa Mesa United, really.
It's a Costa Mesa United sponsor.
Yeah, yeah, and they buy some of the tickets.
Yes.
Quite a bit of the tickets as well. And I bought two tickets and I don't really like to go to baseball, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll go to them.
Yeah, but I like baseball, so I'll go.
Our next meeting for Coastline ROP is this coming Thursday, but I do want to do a shout out to Bakersfield Unified School District and Kern County. They are building a sixty million dollar, passed through the bond, a sixty million dollar career and technical education center.
Wow.
Where all the kids, now Kern High School District is one of, if not the largest high school district in the state of California. They're patterning it sort of after CART, which is the Center for Advanced Research and Technology, which is a joint venture between Fresno and Clovis Unified, it's where their CT programs are housed. Kids from all over the district, those two districts attend half the day, so they go either the morning session at their home school and they come over and take robotics or law or all the pathways, but they're still students. And then, or they go to high school in the morning and they come in the afternoon. And it's patterned after corporate office, so they have a CEO instead of a superintendent, they have lunch break rooms that, you know, and sort of, quite exciting. And so kudos to Bakersfield for doing what I want for Newport Mesa. I just want a building, I want a building so that our students can, we can provide our students with the, you know, instead of having them at the high school and we have a central location where all of our wonderful career and technical education programs can be and flourish and be large enough to accommodate all of these wonderful programs. So, that's my report.
I understand you attended the foundation meeting as well.
Oh, I did, I apologize. Yes, I attended the Newport Mesa Schools Foundation because Mrs. Snell was off seeing tennis, right? Is that correct?
She was exploring other schools.
It's a wonderful, interesting group, led by some, some fabulous people. They are, at this point in time, sort of questioning their existence because just, and I think Dr. Doughty was there too, I mean, even Scott wanted to resign and we kept saying, no, 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 but I think that they need some support from the district in terms of how to, how to get the message out. Because in some respects, they're competing with a lot of the private, our, our own high school.
Individual foundations.
Individual foundations at the various high schools. And how do we get that message out that these are, this supports all of our teachers? And so some conversations about how we can do that and how we can market and how we can talk about it, especially at the, at the breakfast that's coming up. So that, it was quite, well, they, they do do quite a good job in terms of the, all of the silent auction items, majority of that is donated and so they did quite well on that. But again, and they, they have a large amount, don't, I think they said that they have, they're almost, they're concerned about having too much money and they should have been giving us a little bit more out, but the donations are, the donations are, are declining, so they're very concerned.
Need some big donors.
Yep.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Bill Gates, feel free.
No? Okay, so, informal reports.
Oh, just real quickly, I do want to go back and and talk about safety and and we were talking this morning and Mr. Lee Sung reminded me that, you know, when we had Columbine, the state came up with some money and provided cities and monies, cities and school districts with money to address these safety issues. And I real feel, I really feel that that's the appropriate funding mechanism, the state going through, because, you know.
We don't need a bullet train.
It's, it's not, this is a societal problem. And unfortunately, every time there's a societal problem, they try to get, fix it through schools. And we really, you know, we need to focus on educating our kids, supporting our kids, helping them develop into well-rounded individuals. You know, if they, if, if we're going to make, if they're going to make our school safer, it's a societal issue and they need to provide those funds for us. One of the things I think that's working really well that we started, and this came really from board members who've sat on on SARB a couple of years ago, and we added social workers to student services. And I've talked to all the high school principals that are, that are utilizing those social workers and they say, this is amazing, these are the people who are able to come in and work with our kids on a different level.
We need two more, right? Yep, we can always ask for two more.
We can always two more.
Well, it's all priorities, it's wherever, you know, whatever we stop doing, whatever we start doing something new, we have to stop doing something else.
Yeah, I know.
So we'll ask Sarah, see what she wants to stop, so we can start this. No, but it is, it is, it is something we have to talk about, we're going to make some hard, we're going to have to make some hard decisions. But I think, you know, it's, it's, this is the right solution because these people, these are, these people are trained to work with the social emotional issues specifically and they've been very effective. I think also Sarah's department's done a great job in utilizing a former, a retired police officer, Vlad Anderson, who has been a, been a tremendous addition to the team and it's nice to have a trained police officer who goes out on home visits to find out what's going on in families. So I do agree, we do need more resources out there, I think we have to be smart about those resources and I really think the state needs to pony up some money here as it's a societal problem, it's not just a school problem.
They have this big train that they're not building right now, maybe they could use the bullet train money to help out South.
Well, you know, you know, it's like bond money?
Yeah.
Can only be used for certain reasons.
I'll go to the ballot box and vote to change it.
The state is, you know, they are looking for ways to do it, you know.
Are they?
I mean, to help support us. And I think that, you know, we would be a good model because I, I understand we're the only district that's utilizing this.
Yes, yes. Well, we're the only one that can hire enough people to utilize it.
Well, and that's, and that's what, I think that, you know, if they could see, you know, that the impact that we're making, you know, because this is the time to make that, you know, request of them is, you know, that's where CSBA, we can help in that too.
Finally, I just want to tell you, you know, humans, the theory is that humans spread across the planet through gene pool sharing, okay? And so, you know, we all have certain genes, some of us even have, you know, some of our ancestors that weren't on this, in this species, who carry some of those genes.
Why are you telling us?
But it's true, it's true. And I just wanted to relate it to this, the, the Learning Resource Center. It's going to be like a, it's going to be like a gene pool, it's going to, people are going to go there and it's going to spur other ideas and it's going to get modified and it's going to be applied in a school, in another school, in the way they think is the best way to do it. But, and it, I tell you, where they got the idea from modern day, it's a very different resource center, some of the principles are accurate. They don't have a, a nonfiction text anymore because you have them right here on your computer, you do all your research. So what do they basically carry? Fiction. And it's enjoyment reading, which has been very popular at modern day, so I'm really interested in seeing how, how much fiction is checked out of the, out of the new resource center at CDM. But I really think, you know, I know that our architect CEO here would like a, a, a nice organized manner that this is going to spread out, but I haven't seen that yet. And it's all like a pool of ideas that float around, so we'll just.
Gene pool of ideas.
Yes, it is, it is.
Yes, to this is, no to that.
That's the, that's the other species that he's from.
Oh, okay.
No report.
You cracked me up. Mizzles.
We talked, we did, the LRC, so that's, that's my main report, other than the fact that because I have not done any of the Twenty-three in Me or Ancestry DNA things, I don't know for sure, but I'm pretty confident that I'm of Northern European ancestry, which means that I am part Neanderthal, like most Europeans, as Dr. Navarro was pointing out. Yes, that's true.
So he has to fully develop frontal lobe.
He does. Okay, we're getting silly.
I was going to say, it's deteriorating fast.
Yeah, you had a report tonight, okay. No report, no report, no report.
I have a report.
Okay.
So, obviously, we've all been talking a lot about safety and I want you to know that since the last board meeting, when Dr. DiAgostino came up, gave the report, he did assure the board that we would be looking at different safety things that we can come back to recommend to the board. I just wanted to assure you that since then, we have met and had several planning meetings. We devoted almost the entire K-12 principal meeting yesterday to open up a dialogue and to talk about a number of quick initiatives, things that we can do right now that's not going to require additional funding, things within our resources right now. And like Dr. Navarro said, I mean, we're hoping and we're anticipating that there will be some additional safety monies that will come to all districts. I know that's on the, the attention of all of our legislators, so, but we can't wait for that. So we're looking at some things that we can do within our means, we're drafting those things, it's, it's quite a, quite a checklist and some small, quick, easy things and some bigger things that's going to warrant some planning with our police and and various groups. I will assure the, our two employee associations that we will be meeting with them to review that list with them. I don't want to share it right now because it's still in draft form, but I did want to assure you that we are working on that. And and the feedback that we got from principals was, was very positive and they were great to contribute some additional ideas to that. So very likely at the next board meeting, we'll be able to share more of those details with you and like I said, we want to vet that with the various groups before we publicly announce what we'll be doing.
Good, excellent. Okay.
Move to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, have a nice evening.
See you guys tomorrow.